Welcome to the City Council Meeting. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to read the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrioleño Tongva and the Gabrioleño Quiche peoples. I'll call this meeting of the October 6, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. It is 6:08. Thanks for your patience. We are joined by a very special guest. Will Colette Colar please join us to recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Colette. City Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Hane?
Here.
Councilmember Meister?
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilmann?
Here.
And Mayor Byers?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, will you please provide us with a report of closed session?
Yes, hi. Good evening. The City Council convened a closed session this evening at 5:00 PM. There were no members of the public here to speak on the closed session agenda. The council spoke about the two items listed on the posted agenda and took no reportable action and concluded a few minutes after 6:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move to approval of the agenda. City Clerk, are there any changes from staff to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Staff is requesting we table item F8.
There is an F8?
The appointment to the Planning Commission?
Correct.
There's some time-sensitive voting matters coming before the Planning Commission, though, so...
It was to allow additional time for applicants to submit, but it's at the desire of the council.
They have, like, several big items coming before them. So if we don't have a ninth person and something's four-four, it could be a problem.
I actually support waiting until we have more applicants. And I think the Clerk's office actually neglected to notify us that there was a vacancy. So the first time I heard about it was when we were communicated to by one of the applicants. So I would support holding that for two weeks.
I don't support that.
And also typically, the city clerk will send out a notice to various planning...
That did go out.
Association, did that go out?
Yeah, we do have two applicants.
It was posted, and we do have two applicants.
Okay.
My concern is also the agenda for the Planning Commission that is coming up.
Yeah.
And timing of appointment to those meetings.
I don't think it's... We've given it enough time for applications, but I also didn't hear anything until I saw the email from one of the applicants.
Yeah, I don't support it.
So the idea... So there's three people who want to keep it on the agenda and two people who want to keep it off the agenda for tonight. I think that means we keep it on the agenda tonight. Are there any other changes from my colleagues? Okay.
Wonderful. May I begin? Sorry. Before I... I'll start at the end. I would like to see if we can move F6, preserving entertainment studios in West Hollywood. F5, the audit of vacant residential and commercial units. I knew one of my colleagues...
I actually don't support moving that to consent.
Okay. F4, the sponsorship of the community event with Cindy Handler?
Yes.
F2, City X1 Youth Group Holiday Event? The Sober Drag Bingo Event with Institute for Public Strategies?
I know F3 is your item. Could we also move F3 to consent?
Sure.
There was one other item he skipped because it was his. F7, the amendment to the pre-approved lists. You have questions? Okay.
Is there... Is there regarding pride? Do people find moving pride to consent? Item E3, sorry.
That's you, Ron, the Planning. You're moving it to consent?
And are we okay moving D1 to consent? The cannabis security item? Yeah.
We discussed it. That's how it came...
Just for the sake of...
Okay.
Do we want to talk about Out Athletes Fund? E4? Okay.
Okay. Do we need to do a review of that, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. I do have items D3, E3, F1, F2, F4, and F6 moving to consent. Did I miss any?
And D1?
D1.
And D1.
Sorry, it was D1, not D3. Sorry, my apologies. So again, that was D1, E3, F1, F2, F4, F6. Thank you. F3.
On item F6, I do have some comments about the timing in the staff report, so I would like to address that, and I will address it under public... or under council member comments later. But I'm fine with leaving the item on the consent calendar. Yeah?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Levine Act disclosures. Can my colleagues review the agenda and report any Levine Act disclosures?
I have none.
None? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to adjournment motions. Do any of my... I know we have some adjournment motions tonight. Councilmember... I'm sorry, Vice Mel Heilmann, do you want to begin?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Rob Henig. Rob was a devoted husband, son, a loyal friend to many. He lectured at UCLA Political Science Department for six years. He opened his own law firm specializing in employment law. Throughout his life, he served as a mentor for many young attorneys, and he left a lasting impression on both his colleagues and community. He was known for his integrity, his grit, and his determination. He presented at various legal education programs, including the LA County Bar, the Beverly Hills Bar. He served on the Board of the ACLU of Southern California. He was the past president of the LGBT Rights Chapter. He was a founding board chair of what would become Equality California. He served the LA LGBT Center's Legal Referral Program and on the Board of the Tom Finland Foundation. A celebration of Rob's life is planned on Sunday, October 26, in the Doheny Room of the ARC, the West Hollywood Rec Center, at 647 North San Vicente from 2:30 to 4:00. And I would request we adjourn in Rob's memory.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Erickson would like to add?
Yeah, I would just like to thank my colleague for adjourning in Rob's memory. I got the chance to serve when I was Board President of the ACLU of Southern California with Rob, and he was just a delight to work with and a true savant when it came to matters of the law, but matters of social justice. And I was so shocked to see this when he passed from our Board Alumni List serve. But he's touched so many lives and organizations, and he is truly someone that just helped shape what our community is today, and he will be deeply, deeply missed. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll turn it to Councilmember Meister for our final adjournment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to adjourn this evening in memory of Jane Goodall. Jane Goodall was a trailblazing naturalist whose intimate observations of chimpanzees in the African wild produced powerful insights that transformed basic concepts of humankind. Tenacious and keenly observant, Goodall paved the way for other women in primatology. Though she is most well-known for her 65-year study of wild chimpanzees in Tanzania, in the latter part of her life, she expanded her focus and became a global advocate for human rights, animal welfare, species, and environmental protection, and many other crucial issues. In her 80s, she continued to travel 300 days a year to speak to schoolchildren and others about the need to fight deforestation, preserve chimpanzees' natural habitat, and promote sustainable development in Africa. She was 91 years old when she passed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn tonight's meeting to the presentations. And first, we'll recognize Colette, who did such a tremendous job of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Please join us up here for a photo and collect your certificate. Okay. And I'll turn it to Councilmember Erickson for our next presentation on Ageism Awareness Day.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I am so excited to proclaim this month on behalf of Ageism Awareness Day, as my good friend Barbara Meltzer in the crowd has helped make sure educating our community on for many years. Ageism refers to stereotypes, prejudice, and discrimination towards others based on age. This applies to interpersonal, institutional, cultural, and structural levels. Ageism negatively affects older adults across healthcare, employment, housing, culture, and education, and addressing these biases benefits people of all ages by fostering dignity, respect, and equity across generations. Ageism often intersects with other forms of bias, including racism, sexism, and ableism. And these compounding inequities reinforce the urgency of eliminating age-based bias as part of a broader inclusion goals. In 1987, the city established the Senior Advisory Board, now known as the Older Adults Advisory Board, or the OAB, something very important to know because Barbara Meltzer herself will glare at you from across the room if you don't say the word "older adults", to ensure that older residents... And she's done a lot in educating that, so it's very good that we make sure we make that distinction. Have the opportunities for meaningful community engagement in the city's decision-making processes and serve as a key advocate and liaison between the older adults, community organizations, the city council, city officials, and the broader community. The City of West Hollywood embraces aging as part of its commitment to being caring, inclusive, and prioritizing the well-being and quality of life of older residents. The City Council would like to proclaim October 9, 2025, as Ageism Awareness Day, and West Hollywood encourages residents and community members to join in raising awareness, advocating for the elimination of ageism, and fostering a society that respects and empowers older adults. I would love to now invite up my dear friend, our former Commissioner of the Human Services Commission, as well as a Commissioner on the County Board on Ageism and Older Adults, and the incomparable Barbara Meltzer.
It's my show. What pressure! What pressure! Oh, my gosh. Thank you, thank you so much for this. This is really, really an important issue for me and for many people. And while I am here, I would... Thank you for this, by the way. I would like just to give us a list of four forms of ageism. Okay? It's like just a little education. Internalized is one way. How we feel about ourselves as aging people, and ageism of which older adults marginalize and discriminate against other older people. Implicit: the unconscious bias that includes attitudes, feelings, and behaviors towards people of other age groups that operates without conscious awareness or intention. Cultural: the everyday invisible, profoundly ingrained, and normalized negative messages about ageism, and old people embedded in movies, television, songs, jokes, and many other things. Benevolent: per... patron... I can't say the word. Benevolent, patronizing beliefs that older people need to be protected and taken care of by younger people because they are no longer able to make decisions for themselves. And those are just some of the things we're fighting against. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership, Barbara. There are several significant awareness commemorations taking place in October. In addition to Ageism Awareness Day, October marks National Disability Awareness Month. National Disability Awareness Month is a time to increase awareness about people living with disabilities and emphasize the importance of inclusive policies and practices. Since 1945, the month of October has been observed as a way to pay tribute to all who fought for better laws, demanded better treatment, overcame ignorance, and indifference to make our communities better. In recognition of this month, the City of West Hollywood, in partnership with the Disability Advisory Board, will host the Disabilities Health and Wellness Fair on Thursday this week, October 9, 2025, at Plummer Park. And on Wednesday, October 22, 2025, the city will also host the 27th Annual Disability Service Awards, where we will recognize the leadership of so many incredible individuals in this community and beyond. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank our Disabilities Advisory Board for all the work they do to bring awareness during this month and all year round, so please join us... offers, including ambience transportation, dial-a-ride, so many things that are taken care of here. I grew up in Seattle, I've lived in New York and San Francisco, and hands down, this is the best place to live if you're a person with disabilities. The City of West Hollywood cares and takes many actions that improve the quality of life for people living with disabilities. I thank you so much for promoting our Health Fair this Thursday, and I know we'll see some of you on October 22, as we celebrate services and people that do an outstanding job in our community. Thank you so much for having a Disabilities Advisory Board, and I'm very honored and pleased to be the chairman this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just a reminder that during Disabilities Awareness Month, that disabilities come in all forms, many of which are visible, many of which are not, and God willing, we all live long enough that virtually all of us will experience one or more forms of disabilities, either permanent or temporary. And the mark of a good society that well serves its members is how it treats those who are the most vulnerable among us. And I think the city does its best to serve and to watch out for persons with disabilities, although we may have some disagreements, obviously, and that's natural and to be expected and a part of democracy. I think we all have the best interests of the city at heart in trying to work together to best serve the needs of all of its citizens, and I thank you very much. And again, we hope to see you on Thursday and also on the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank the Disability Advisory Board for joining us for this special commemoration, and we're also lucky to be joined by another fabulous board here in the city, the city's Women's Advisory Board. They're here tonight to receive proclamations for two other awareness commemorations taking place in the month of October. It sure is a busy and special month. Breast Cancer Awareness and Domestic Partner and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month are this month as well. So, October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in recognition of domestic violence and intimate partner violence as a national issue that affects people of all ages, genders, races, cultures, religions, educational backgrounds, sexual orientations, gender identities, and marital statuses. Domestic violence is also referred to as intimate partner violence and can take many forms. In addition to physical abuse, it can include sexual abuse, verbal abuse, emotional abuse, intimidation, controlling behaviors, isolating behaviors, and economic abuse. Over 80 million people across the nation have experienced intimate partner violence in their lifetimes, with 10 million adults annually, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner. People from marginalized groups, including women and members of the LGBTQ+ community, are at an increased risk for experiencing intimate partner violence, as abusers will often capitalize on existing social and economic vulnerabilities to wield control. This month, the city's lanterns along Santa Monica Boulevard will glow in the color purple to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month and in remembrance of those who have died because of domestic violence, honor those who survived, and to encourage those who work to end violence to unite and stand with domestic violence and intimate partner violence survivors. October is also National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign aimed at raising awareness of this disease and increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection, diagnosis, and treatment of breast cancer. About every two minutes, one case of breast cancer is diagnosed in the United States, and in 2025, more than 310,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women, and about 2,800 cases in men. Additionally, nearly 43,000 women and men are expected to lose their lives from breast cancer this year. While the breast cancer death rate in the United States has greatly declined in recent years due to advancements in early detection and treatment, breast cancer mortality remains disproportionately high in Black women, and awareness and stigma can be barriers to detection and care in men, trans men, and non-binary people. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves as a reminder to educate ourselves about breast cancer, assess personal risk factors, conduct regular self-exams, schedule timely breast cancer screenings, and contribute to fundraising efforts for breast cancer research. Early detection saves lives, and scheduling a mammogram, an appointment that can take as little as 15 minutes, could save your life. Numerous free and low-cost services are available for those in need. So, we thank and invite the Women's Advisory Board to join us for a recognition of these two awareness months. Thank you.
On behalf of the Women's Advisory Board for the city, I thank you all for making awareness so important. I don't want to repeat anything that was said, but I just want to say one thing in regards to domestic violence. We're three women standing here right now. One out of three of us will either experience or have experienced either physical or sexual violence with an intimate partner. That is a global statistic. One in three, think about that, will have experienced or will experience that. And that doesn't even include the more subtle abuse that happens when there is a partner that is abusive, that is abusive and with abusive behavior, controlling behavior, which is something that often leads to physical violence. I do know that there is one other board member that would like to address this issue, so can I invite you?
Oh, yes, thank you. Hi. So, as our board is going to be focusing on DV this month, we are rolling out a campaign to raise awareness for the emotional abuse that happens. We're going to have a social media graphic explaining all the different nagging, love bombing with a link for people to get more resources. Also, we want to work with you more closely to help form legislation to help with resources such as the abuse in the family court systems. Pets aren't allowed in shelters very often, so people, a big majority of the time, people can't leave or don't want to leave. So, you will be hearing a lot more from us, and hopefully, we can work with you and this county and the state to really have more resources available. And again, really importantly, stop the abuse in the court systems. Thank you.
And addressing breast cancer awareness, and again, I don't want to repeat any of the statistics, but you cannot go into a room today and say, "Do you know someone that has breast cancer or has had breast cancer?" without every single hand going up immediately. And I'm old enough to know that that wasn't always the case. You could ask in the same room and have maybe a third, maybe not even that, of people raising their hands. Breast cancer is very pervasive, and it is going now spreading, as you have said, to further groups than just women who have breast cancer. So, we are really pushing very hard. Would you like to?
Sure. Hi, KT. How are you doing? There's some information in the back for everybody. We're doing something, which is a point you brought up about self-checking. A campaign we are starting is the Buddy Check Campaign. So, this, one of the things that we're trying to educate is that not only women over 40 can get breast cancer, so the thing you should do is, your friend, your mom, your sister, your aunt, anybody, any woman, woman in identifying or non-binary person should definitely check in with your friend. It's very important. It saved two of my friends' lives when they were in their 30s. But we also wanted to segue into something really fast, that this is also Menopause Awareness Month, and Menopause Awareness Day will be on the 18th, and we are doing a campaign called "Is It Happening?" And you can find some information in the back of some, excuse me, of symptoms that lead to perimenopause and menopause. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work. Okay, we will now move into public comment. The city council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes, with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the city council on consent calendar items, other agenda items if members of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the city council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing, which we do have one tonight. City clerk, how many speakers do we have in chambers and on Zoom?
We have 17 in chambers and two on Zoom.
Okay, so, as that stands, that would take us beyond our 20-minute limit. If there are a number of speakers signed up for consent items, we'll see how quickly we're able to move through those, and then we'll encourage members of the public to keep your comments concise with the idea that we are able to hear from as many people as possible in this first period, and I will keep track of time to see where we're at, and maybe my colleagues will be okay with continuing. We'll see how we're going through this list, though. Okay, let's start with the speakers signed up here. I have Kathy Blavis first, followed by Stephanie Harker, followed by Anita Goswami.
Good evening, Kathy Blavis, City of West Hollywood. I wanted to thank the city for acknowledging Disability Awareness Month, and I did not know that it was Ageism Awareness Day. I just want to comment that there seems to be a dichotomy with celebrating Disability Awareness Month and Ageism Day and the concept of aging in place, when so many people are affected by the scooters that are left on sidewalks, the delivery robots that block people's way, and now, sadly, the bike lane on Fountain Avenue in terms of the loss of parking. A lot of people who park are either elderly, excuse me, older adults, seniors. There are disabled people that park along Fountain, and in terms of the bike lane, the mitigation would have people walking from Crescent Heights, would have them walking from Plummer Park parking. So, as we celebrate disabilities, and we celebrate ageism, and we celebrate the concept of aging in place, there are things and obstacles put in the place of all of those things that kind of contradict the celebratory aspect of what the city council is doing, and I just find that to be a shame.
Stephanie Harker, followed by Anita Goswami, followed by Scott Schmidt.
Good evening, Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. The Disabilities Awareness Month should be a priority for all of us. The Health Fair is great, and the awards event is always inspiring. The DAAB, staffed by dedicated, hard-working group of appointed members, quite frankly, every month, we should be aware of people living with disabilities. It's why the ADA was passed in Congress in 1990. I am also speaking on the Fountain Avenue Streetscape Project, formerly known as the Bike Lane Project. Just last year, an item on the agenda sailed through on consent to not install an additional traffic signal and new crosswalks with handicap ramps. It was essentially voted down, as the staff report said, "One of the disadvantages would be that it would encourage motorists to cut through Fountain, from Fountain to Santa Monica Boulevard on a quiet side street." Fast forward to the Bike Lane Project, the majority of you approved two weeks ago, which will cause 900 cars per hour, the staff's number, 900 cars per hour, to cut down side streets. The current plan, as it stands, is not safe for everyone, not even bike riders. Asking cyclists to cross 120 active driveways, many of which require blindly backing out across the bike lanes, that is not safe. I'm calling for you to put the plan on hold so it can be redesigned as a truly safe street. Further, let's put this Fountain Plan on the November 2026 ballot, so every resident can let their preferences be known. Thank you.
Anita Goswami, followed by Scott Schmidt, followed by Chris Baldwin.
Hi there, Anita Goswami. I am a longtime resident of West Hollywood. I'm speaking on Item D1 that was actually moved to the consent calendar regarding removing the neighborhood security guard patrol requirement for cannabis licensees. I think this requirement should not be moved. These businesses by nature are cash-intensive, customers are at a higher risk for robbery, especially with the changing economic conditions. We often hear the issues with public safety coming on, we see a lot more assaults going on, we just have that rise in crime. I'm concerned about that. Having the additional security guard helps these businesses keep their reputation and keeps their customers safer. It's a known risk for this type of business, and frankly, a cost of doing that kind of business. The safety record they have is in no small part due to having security guards outside. With what seems to be a continuing effort, and a concerted effort by the city, to reduce parking, it's even more important to keep that security at a thousand-foot radius. Finding parking near those stores is challenging and increases that customer vulnerability. This is something, you know, again, talking, whether it's seniors, disabled, whoever it is, those customers need to be able to get to that store, and that's, again, part of that cost of doing business, but the city should be looking in terms of viable businesses, can we get there and park closely enough to keep those businesses in business? We need more safety in West Hollywood. I appreciate that the cannabis businesses recognize their risks and take those actions to keep it safe. We need to keep that security guard. Thank you.
Scott Schmidt, followed by Chris Baldwin, followed by Gabby Rojas.
Good evening, Scott Schmidt, resident of West Hollywood, executive director of Emerald Village, West Hollywood. First to talk about Item D1, the security guard mandate. We've discussed this, I think, for two years almost. I want to thank the council for directing staff to bring it back, thank the staff for bringing it back in a timely manner, and thank Danny for meeting with the licensees last week to discuss all of the issues. You know, this was something that was initially, I think it was in response to challenges that there was on Melrose, a dispensary just outside the city borders, and there was nuisances that were caused by that. What we've seen in more than five years in West Hollywood is, you know, our businesses aren't having that problem for whatever reason, I'm not going to get into speculation about what it is, but, you know, this is a mandate that has been extremely costly. parking, it's even more important to keep that security at a thousand-foot radius. Finding parking near those stores is challenging and increases that customer vulnerability. This is something, you know, again, talking, whether it's seniors, disabled, whoever it is, those customers need to be able to get to that store. And that's, again, part of that cost of doing business. But the city should be looking in terms of viable businesses, can we get there and park closely enough to keep those businesses in business? We need more safety in West Hollywood. I appreciate that the cannabis businesses recognize their risks and take those actions to keep it safe. We need to keep that security guard. Thank you.
Scott Schmidt, followed by Chris Baldwin, followed by Gabby Rojas.
Good evening, Scott Schmidt, resident of West Hollywood, Executive Director of Emerald Village, West Hollywood. First to talk about Item D1, the security guard mandate. We've just, you know, discussed this, I think, for two years almost. I want to thank the council for directing staff to bring it back, thank the staff for bringing it back in that time and the manner. And thank Danny for meeting with the licensees last week to discuss all of the issues. You know, this was something that was initially, I think it was in a response to challenges that there was on Melrose, a dispensary just outside the city borders. And there was nuisances that were caused by that. What we've seen in more than five years in West Hollywood is, you know, our businesses aren't having that problem for whatever reason, I'm not going to get into speculation about what it is. But, you know, this is a mandate that has been extremely costly, costly and burdensome, and so we appreciate the council's willingness to work with this industry to relieve that burden. There will still be security guards when the businesses are open. This will actually keep the security guards there, so they're not walking around the whole time. So that's great. The other thing I wanted to weigh in on was, since you also moved the Pride item to consent, I saw a little peach in there about World Pride 2026 being in Amsterdam. That would be a wonderful place for us to help spread the story of West Hollywood and what we're doing specifically in the cannabis industry. And if y'all want to talk about ways that we might do that, give me some, some ideas. I will be there in a month for the Amsterdam Coffee Shop Awards, spreading the word about West Hollywood. So hopefully, there's an opportunity to leverage all of the wonderful things that we have in our city next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Baldwin, followed by Gabby Rojas, followed by Venture Griswold.
Good afternoon, good evening, actually, City Council. It's a pleasure to see you all. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Byers and the esteemed council members. I'm here today as the president of the L Project to urge you to maintain the $100,000 funding allocation for Women's, the Women's Freedom Festival and Dyke March as part of WeHo Pride 2026. The L Project has been filling a critical void in our community since the closure of the Palms in 2013, when lesbians and queer women lost their gathering spaces, we stepped up. Today, the Women's Freedom Festival and Dyke March represent more than events. They are lifelines for visibility, community, and artistic expression for those who have historically been marginalized, even within LGBTQ spaces. But before I move on to why this funding is essential, I'd first like to thank everyone on the special events team, Cleo, Megan, and Carrie, for their exceptional professionalism, guidance, and support to ensure why, to ensure we have a successful Pride event. Now, why do I believe this funding is essential? First, the economic and cultural impact. These, in, these events draw thousands of attendees to West Hollywood, supporting our local businesses and reinforcing WeHo's reputation as a welcoming, inclusive destination. Second, it's a platform for emerging talent. That's what we do at the L Project. Third, community building in action. Since 2015, the L Project has created multicultural, intergenerational spaces where people connect beyond the bar scene. These are free, accessible events that welcome everyone, fostering the kind of inclusivity community West Hollywood champions. Fourth, a preservation of lesbian and queer women's history. And before my time is over, thank you very much.
Gabby Rojas, followed by Venture Griswold, followed by Carlos Sosa.
Hi, folks. Good evening. My name is Gabby Rojas. I'm from the Institute for Public Strategies, you're good, and the Safer WeHo Coalition. I just wanted to get up here and thank you, folks, for continuing to fund and create sober spaces in West Hollywood. As we know, folks are straying away from the usual drug and alcohol-centered spaces, whether it be due to sobriety, safety, or the economy, because drinks be expensive. We know these sober spaces mean so much to our community, especially our youth. We're seeing sober spaces pop up all over the country, and we truly believe that WeHo has the power to really uplift these spaces and be an innovator when it comes to their establishment as a norm in our communities. So thank you for your time, and I truly hope we see more than pop up. Thank you.
Apologies for saying your name incorrectly four times. Venture Griswold, followed by Carlos Sosa.
Hi, everyone. My name is Venture Griswold. I'm representative for Institute for Public Strategies and the Safer WeHo Coalition. Thank you so much for moving our items to the consent calendar. We're really honored that you continue to trust us to create these sober, safe spaces in West Hollywood for folks. As you know, IPS has been a long history of bringing sober events to West Hollywood, including our Pride AF concert this summer, which had over 100 folks on the rooftop right here at the Aquatic Center. And last December, we held our first Slay the Night Holiday Drag Bingo with Pickle, the drag laureate of West Hollywood, who is coming back for this event, November Fest to Sober October Fest Alternative Drag Bingo. It's going to have substance use prevention throughout it, it's going to have, like, themed bingo that relates to substance use prevention, it's going to have a community resource fair that's carnival-themed, and we think it's going to be a really good resource for the community. So thank you again for your continued support, and we hope to see some of you there.
Thank you. Carlos Sosa, followed by Mark Lee Lumpkins, followed by Michael Seldich. We're about halfway through our time, just as a time check.
Good evening. Carlos Sosa, Executive Director of the City X1 Youth Group, an organization locally here that services LGBT homeless youth. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Item F2, which is specifically for funding of our annual holiday events, which mark their 23rd and 24th anniversary this year. It's, as we approach the holiday season, it is probably amongst the city's most unique events, as we're getting ready with our meal deliveries for Thanksgiving week to local encampments, where we've identified where local youth, LGBT youth that are homeless are being, moving around, so we make delivery meals to them. And then on Sunday, December the 7th, we have a very special event, the Tamale Wars, which is a Star Wars-themed event that has live Star Wars characters, Christmas trees, all sorts of amazing activities. And our council members who attended last year can attest to that and will continue it again this year. And we do all of this for our homeless youth, for our trans youth and our immigrant youth, all which are under attack by the current administration. We want to let them know we are their extended family, we are a community here for them, and that we are partnering with a number of local organizations to provide them with transitional living, GED training, HIV testing, all types of amazing services for them, as we're talking about ageism and youth as well this meeting. The suicide rate amongst our older adults and our youth is really high during the holidays. So this is a opportunity to bring them to special events, to let them know that we're here for them as a community. And if anybody wants to sponsor us or help out beyond that, let us know. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Mark Lee Lumpkins, followed by Michael Seldich, followed by M. John Larson.
Hello, my name is Mark Lee Lumpkins, and I'm president of the Lot at Fermosa Studios in West Los Angeles, in West Hollywood, excuse me. I'm speaking in opposition of the City Council's directing a draft ordinance to evaluate other methods to preserve the entertainment industry and ancillary uses of the City of West Hollywood studio. Primarily, this has come to light only this afternoon. By sheer coincidence, we were part of the survey of the East Economic Development of West Hollywood. As you may all know, for the last five years, the industry has been in the desert with regards to bringing entertainment to West Hollywood, and in that matter, to the United States or California. We feel that this ordinance and this study will undermine the flexibility and the growth and changes that we're still in the middle of evaluating. There seem, is there confusion? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if I was speaking on the right thing. In general, right now, the Lot in particular, and our industry, has been in such a matter of drastic change. We are looking at AI, we are looking at labor concerns, and this study and the questionable changes to the way that we use our space will be detrimental in what we are attempting to sell to the industry itself, which is a changing studio environment with the flexibility and the amount, and the ability to pivot. For example, we are currently in the midst of negotiating or, and attempting to sell deals to the Olympics on various opportunities here at the Lot. With some of the restrictions that could come with this ordinance, it could impact those types of decisions. So that we do ask that there be careful consideration with changing an industry that is already in a tremendous amount of change, trying to find itself again, not only for the labor, but the industry itself and the technology that's coming at us so quickly. I do appreciate your time and listening.
Mark, Michael Seldich, followed by M. John Larson. Then we'll do a time check.
Hi. I think I can confidently speak for all of us opposed to the Fountain Streetscape Project, that we are tired of being accused of not caring about safety. Opposition to this ill-conceived design should never be mistaken for indifference to safety. It is not safe to create congestion and gridlock by eliminating lanes, fueling driver frustration and pushing people into reckless maneuvers. It's not safe to leave trash in delivery vehicles with no choice but to stop in traffic lanes, forcing drivers to swerve around them into oncoming traffic. It is not safe to send thousands of frustrated drivers onto smaller feeder streets as they desperately try to escape gridlock on Fountain. It is not safe to give cyclists a false sense of security by running a so-called protected bike lane across 120 driveways where crashes with vehicles are inevitable. Putting bike lanes on Santa Monica Boulevard is safe. I agree that this plan needs to be paused, and alternate designs need to be studied, and this divisive project should be put on the ballot. Thank you.
M. John Larson will be next. And then we'll go to the Zoom speakers and then see if we can come back to the chambers.
Hello. My name is John Larson. My building has 16 units in it, and I moved to that building in 1994 after the earthquake in Northridge, and lived there for 32 years. We haven't had onsite manager now for about four years. And I went to City Hall to try to find out what to do, and I was told to just tell the owners that we, I should have a manager, or I got a piece of paper with lawyers on it to contact them, to see if they could help. And I called every one of them, and no one called me back. I was, sorry, here. About two years ago, there was a gentleman came to our building, his name was Blair, and he said he was with Serat, and he was managing another building, and he was, he paid to watch ours as well, but he's not an onsite manager. There's many things that have not been addressed, our manager used to do before, the services and so forth. I did have a hearing on July 15th, asking, the hearing, why there's not onsite manager, and I have not heard back from that either. So I'm just asking for any help you can give me. I thought it was a law on the books, but apparently, it's not being enforced, I'm not sure. But I'd like to have an onsite manager back, is what I'm trying to get. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jonathan, you can probably go talk to our staff in the back, so if someone could come help this nice man.
We'll go to Zoom for our next.
We're at time for the council chambers. We're going to go to Zoom. Tom, we're going to go to Zoom, and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time. Enjoy the Zoom.
Mayor, we have one speaker in Zoom for the consent calendar items. Genevieve Morrell, please put a star six.
Genevieve Morrell, really? Unbelievable.
Genevieve, if you can hear us, you're the next speaker for public comment.
Can you hear?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, apologies, I'm technically challenged. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, Genevieve Morrell, President and, President and CEO for the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and Bid Manager for the Sunset Strip and the Design District bid. We thank you for your support of our cannabis business and removal of the requirements for the security guards that goes into the neighborhood. It was something that was, you discussed last time, so it doesn't need any more conversation. You've all received our letters for all of these items, so we do want to reiterate that we support gathering data for our vacancies. We've asked that any regulation be based on clear data that supports any actions by the city, and that the findings are not always evidence of something malicious by the landowners. Commercial real estate models are complex and need to be carefully evaluated. You heard earlier from CIM and the Lot, and we encourage that you have, encourage that you have stated to that, that we look into how we protect our entertainment studios, but at the same time ensure we balance preservation with flexibility, allowing for continued innovation, economic vitality, and adaptability to industry shift. And finally, we thank you for your support of our next activation on Sunset Strip, Spinning Sunset, spooky edition on October 25th at Pink Dot. And then we're going to have a Halloween crawl on, that straddles both weekends through Halloween weekend. And you can go to wwwthesunsetstrip.com for more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have about seven speakers left in council chambers. I think with the time available, we'll go ahead and continue to hear public comment rather than moving everyone to the end of the agenda. So apologies to the speaker who didn't hear that at the top, that we would be coming back. It was important to get through the consent in the first 20 minutes. The call, the council's supportive of continuing public comment. I don't see Tom Demille in the back anymore, so we'll go to Michael, Mike Nuttall, followed by Raphael Landon, and then Lyd, et cetera.
At the last meeting that we were at, I sat in my normal section, and this goes to you, Mayor Byers, but someone kept on calling you crazy over and over again for you just stating your opinion. And it took me back to my middle school days when I did a report on Elizabeth Packard. So I want to read this. "In 1860, after 21 years of marriage and six children, Elizabeth Packard's life shattered in an instant. Her husband had her locked away in an asylum, not for violence, not for instability, but for daring to disagree. She questioned his rigid Calvinism faith, and in Illinois at the time, a husband needed no proof, no trial, not even a wife's consent to declare her insane. Inside, Elizabeth uncovered a grim truth: Many women confined beside her were not mad at all or crazy. They were wives who resisted, daughters who disobeyed, women who dared to speak. Where others broke, Elizabeth sharpened her pen, she observed, she wrote, she waited. After three long years, she stood in court and defended her right to think for herself and won. But freedom was only the beginning. She exposed the asylum system in her books, fought lawmakers face to face, and forced reforms that curbed the power of women, of men to silence women under the disguise of madness. Elizabeth Packard refused silence. Her defiance nearly cost her everything, yet its secure protections for generations of women to come, and I think today she's smiling down on you."
Thank you. Raphael Landon, followed by Lynn, et cetera, followed by Andrew V.
Good evening, City Council members. This time, I'm against bicycle lane project on Fountain. In social teachings, there's one principle called the common good, implies equality. However, if you favor the bicycle lane, bicyclist, and disfavor the people that live there, the residents, that would be inequality, that wouldn't be equality. Residents, like me, would lose the opportunity to lose parking spaces, also for my two tenants. So that would be, again, a perfect example of inequality versus equality in the principle in social teachings of the common good. Thank you.
Lynn, et cetera, followed by Andrew V, followed by David Eckert. And then we have two more after that.
Lynn, et cetera, West Hollywood. Dear John Erickson, Chelsea, and Danny, thank you, thank you, thank you. Have some fountain coincidence to tell you about later. Tonight, I want to talk about the largest threat to democracy, in my opinion, the world has seen. On November 5th, the Supreme Court will begin hearing arguments on the King's tariffs. This isn't hard to understand. The King and his two-bit court of zero prestige are out to cause a huge worldwide depression whereby the billionaires will buy up everything on the cheap, instant worldwide oligarchy. I was blessed to be friends of gay liberation founders, Harry Hay and Archives founder Jim Kepner. Harry was brilliant at understanding politicians. If Harry were here now, he would be saying, we need to have a march on the Supreme Court on November 5th, when they start the tariffs debate. The King is sending troops to cities nationwide because the law he's attempting to use is in case of national emergencies and doesn't mention tariffs. At worst, every Democratic, Democrat senator and congressperson should be on the steps of the Supreme Court November 5th chanting, whose constitution? We, the people's constitution. The absurdity that this nutcase is sending troops to aggravate people because the law that he's using for these tariffs is illegal. The absolute absurdity that we're going through. So on October 18th... So on October 18th, there's a No Kings March, and we, the people.
Andrew V., followed by David Eckert. Then we have Virginia Gillick is our last speaker in chamber. With Andrew V., there you are. Thank you. It's okay.
My name is Andrew, and I live on Fountain and Delong Prey Corner, and I'm not here to charge anyone about the Fountain project, but I do have a plumbing issue, a parking issue. On Delong Prey, I don't know if there's anything that can be done to restrict that parking because if you leave that place, I don't know, 8 o'clock, do not come back until 7:00 because people's gonna take it. I mean, this is only yesterday, $350. I had to bear my car out because they towed it. On the top of the citation, yada, yada, yada. I got two sons and a wife, so I'm accumulating a whole lot of parking tickets. I'm contributing a whole lot to this building and into West Hollywood because of those parking tickets, but I cannot help it. There's just no place to park. And if you guys will be able to just simply leave us at least a half a block for residents or one side of the street or something, but if you leave that place, I live in the corner exactly at Fountain and Delong Prey, and if you leave that place at 8:00, 9:00, do not come home. You will have no space, period. That's it.
Thank you. David Eckert, followed by Virginia Gillick. And then we have one more speaker in Zoom. We'll conclude our public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and distinguished City Council members. Tonight I'd like to talk about a couple issues. One, the allied security uniforms. I think we as a city need to look at their uniforms a little better. There is a lot of black, and with the hours being cut late at night, they're very hard to notice, and they don't have any reflective quality to them, so they get lost in the mix. So I think that can be improved on. Secondly, I'd love to see if the city could start doing mobility classes on bicycles, scooters, and just in general safety. I think it's important that we move forward with these different mobility options, but I don't think people truly know all the rules and of how to safely use any of them at this point. I've been cut off many times by cyclists that feel they have the right of way always, and I'm concerned about that. Lastly, I just want to make the city or the public know that Metro is considering a drastic change to Sunset Boulevard, where they're going to remove all permanent parking from Vermont to Havenhurst to make permanent bus lanes and remove one lane of traffic in directions. And I think at that point, if that is their plan, I would love to see Santa Monica Boulevard do the same respect. And with the issues that are being brought up about Fountain Avenue, I would love to see that street remain as a residential street. Yes, slow it down and everything, but the parking, make that street again a parking thing. I think parking, if that's what's going to happen in Sunset, we really need to start looking at an overall picture of what's going on around us. Thank you.
Virginia Gillick, and then we'll go to our final speaker in Zoom.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council members. I'm Virginia Gillick, resident of West Hollywood for 35 years, and I've had quite a little list of things to talk about, but I only have a couple left because other people covered them. But one of my concerns is that so many residents that I talked to have no idea that this is going on about Fountain Avenue. And I think that that is the responsibility of the council to get more information out. I really do. And I was going to speak about the bus company too, and I'm wondering about when the bikers get to Los Encinas, do we have any ideas for remediation on that? It's a very steep hill, so going up is impossible and going down. So that eliminates a lot of people that don't have a lot of strength to use Fountain Avenue as going west to get off of it, you know? And yeah, I just think that I really think we should try and put this on the ballot about Fountain Avenue. I don't know if you folks have discussed that, but I think it's something that, you know, would be good to decide. I know that money has already been allotted for it, but there must be some way to reconfigure that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Zoom for our final speaker on public comment. Thank you.
Adam Darvish is our last speaker. Adam, go ahead. You'll have two minutes.
Good. Good evening. I'll make it short. Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor and Council and staff. I'm just calling about Halloween event, the upcoming event, and as a resident, I know many residents just about Santa Monica forward in the Rainbow District have experienced a lot of activities after hours, after midnight, just asking the council for a better plan of managing, quote, compliance, managing noise after midnight or even after 2:00 a.m. There are a lot of people just hanging out and partying. You cannot sleep. The other comment I had was we're waiting for your plan on managing the accident from Larrabee and Clark, I mean, I'm sorry, Larrabee and Palm Avenue and Clark for the recent events that happened, cars colliding with other cars or cars hitting condominiums or buildings on both streets. So thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. Thank you all so much for your comments and for your patience. That was a long period. We appreciate you all coming out tonight. We will move to City Manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and community members. Thank you for all of the public commenters this evening. I just have a few announcements. The city is excited to announce the Pickup. The city's free weekend ride will return to service beginning Thursday, October 9th, 2025. As part of the relaunch, the city is unveiling a fresh, updated vehicle design and debuting a pilot program of Thursday night rides from March through October as part of the Rainbow District initiatives. For more information, please visit www.wehope pickup dot com. The city is inviting the community to learn more about and provide feedback on the zoning improvement program for West Hollywood's housing element. As part of the program, the city is evaluating future zoning updates to reduce barriers to creating affordable housing and diverse housing. Join us for the in-person meeting on October 8th or online meeting on October 16th for the second round of community workshops. The city will present the findings for enhancement opportunities in residential and commercial priority areas. And lastly, AIDS Walk Los Angeles will take place in the city of West Hollywood on Saturday, October 13th, beginning at West Hollywood Park at 10:00 a.m. Due to the AIDS Walk, there will be limited street and lane closures. For more information regarding the event or street closures, please visit the city's website at www.wehope.org and search for AIDS Walk. That concludes my comments.
Thanks, David. It's nothing to do with what you said, but I've been noticing in a lot of the larger rooms, specifically the back room, the technology for conferencing and meetings is very outdated, and it doesn't work, and we have to use a laptop screen that then doesn't work, and the audio doesn't hook up, and there's a little side computer that goes missing. I don't know. I'm sure it's somewhere, but the same thing goes for the really, what was redone, pardon the first floor in the meeting room in the City Hall, but could you just, before you depart in many ways, could you just spruce up the spaces just a little bit so these tech issues don't go beyond your tenure? Because I know you always want to leave us better than you found us.
Yes, we are continuing to look at the technology in those rooms. Unfortunately, technology changes really fast, and we haven't been keeping up. I know there's been a number of issues, so we're certainly looking at that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for City Manager? Thank you for the report. We'll move to the fiscal impact on consent calendar. City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal impact on consent calendar with the addition of items D1, E3, F1, F2, F3, F4, F6 is $8,081,444 in expenditures, $0 in revenues, and $13,023 in waived fees. I also want to take this opportunity to read the ordinance of D1 into the record. This is ordinance D on item D1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood, California amending Chapter 5.70 Cannabis Uses of the West Hollywood Municipal Code to Remove the Neighborhood Security Guard Patrol Requirement for Cannabis Licenses.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll move to full vote. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item C1, the public hearing. Item C1, Zone Text Amendment to the Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations in Compliance with State Law and Implementation of the City's Housing Element Program. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures from council members? Seeing none. How, City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Terrific. And we have staff representatives here for staff report. Should my colleagues first? Do we need a full staff report? Can we do an abbreviated report tonight? Abbreviated is terrific.
I don't think I need a report at all.
Do you want to just let the public know what we're here to do tonight so we can move through this quickly then? Thank you.
Sure, Mayor. Nick Marisic, Director of Community Development. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I'm joined by my colleagues from the Community Development Department, and maybe I'll just jump right over to Associate Planner Michelle Montenegro to provide an overview of the item.
We know this is in compliance with state law, so go ahead and, yeah.
Yes, so the City Council adopted an AD ordinance back in February. There are minor changes requested by HCD once it was submitted, so we're back here as a cleanup ordinance to update in compliance with state law.
Thank you very much. Do my colleagues have any questions for staff?
I have a question, and it isn't related to the substance of the ordinance. This, to me, seems like a perfect example where unfortunately, a lot of your time is wasted, the planning commission's time is wasted, the council's time is wasted, we have to do advertisements in the newspaper for something that we have no choice. This is something that is required by state law that we have to do to have our ordinance be in compliance. So is there a way for us to avoid all of that time being wasted and soliciting comments from the public when, again, we have no choice but to comply with the state mandate? Is there something that we can do to speed up the process for these kind of, and it seems like an almost annual change to the state law here?
Yes, Vice Mayor, you know, we're happy to certainly explore if there are other ways we could go about this type of thing. I think this was somewhat unexpected, given the communication from HCD following the submission of the, more of the annual process that we went through previously, but we could certainly talk with City Attorney and brainstorm other ideas to address the issues that you just described.
I mean, at a minimum, I think we should change the noticing requirements in terms of newspaper ads and spending that money on things when we don't have any choice.
Thank you. I see a motion on the table, and just to be clear, there are no members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item. Terrific. So I will go ahead if there's no other questions or comments. We'll close the public testimony portion of this public hearing. It seems that there are no other questions from staff, or I'm sorry, from the council? Nope. So we have a motion and a second and a vote. Thank you very much. Thank you to staff for the presentation tonight. We'll move to, yeah, we're all set. We voted. Those passed 5-0. We're going to move to item E1, Under Unfinished Business, The Continued Discussion of Expanded Noticing Requirements for Projects Requesting Development Agreements. We'll hand this back over to our staff to present. Thank you.
Good thing we stayed. Good evening, Jennifer Alkire, Assistant Director of Community Development. I'm joined still by the Long Range Planning Team, including Long Range Planning Manager Francisco Contreras and Associate Planner Paige Portwood. I'll check who's there.
Swapped.
Who will be giving the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My name is Paige Portwood. Tonight's item before you is a continued discussion of expanded noticing requirements for projects requesting development agreements. Here is an overview of the presentation. On May 19th, 2025, staff presented a Zone Text Amendment to expand the noticing requirements, requiring a community meeting for projects seeking a development agreement. City Council voted 5-0 to adopt an ordinance requiring a neighborhood meeting for projects, but City Council did not elect to expand the noticing radius, thereby maintaining the current 500-foot radius for public hearings and community meetings for all projects. The City Council directed staff to return with maps showing 500, 500, 750, and 1,000-foot radii for a few previously approved Sunset Arts and Advertising projects, including standalone billboards, to visualize the reach of each of the radius. The staff report depicts some of the neighboring jurisdictions and their requirements for development projects, which has been included in previous reports but might be printed to tonight's discussion. And to share the data that staff collected, we selected five previously approved Sunset Arts and Advertising Program billboard projects and two development agreement projects that aren't associated with billboards. 89, 20, and 940 Sunset Boulevard are shown with the two asterisks. While the data indicates expanding the radius to 750 or 1,000 feet does increase the number of noticed properties overall, the percentage increase among the project addresses is inconsistent, where, for example, you'll see highlighted on the screen, could range from a percentage increase of 45% to 143%. So tonight's recommendation is to receive this information and provide feedback. That really concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for providing the side-by-side comparisons for all the cities and the percentage calculations in that chart. I really found that useful information, and as somebody who requested more information about this specific item before making a decision the night it originally came to discussion, those items particularly very much helped me. I will see which of my colleagues would like to begin. Councilmember Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and as you know, this came from an initiative that I had brought forward to increase the radius to 1,000 square feet. So it's, you know, it's fine to compare our policies with other cities, but it's also like comparing apples and oranges because not one of those cities has the density that we have, and projects that intensify the use affect our residents differently than they might affect a less dense city. The cost of increasing the radius is really negligible compared to the benefit of a development agreement. I mean, a development agreement basically increases the value of the properties by millions and millions of dollars. So the fact that, you know, you're increasing the cost on this by, you know, a couple of $500 to $1,000 compared to the 500 square foot, sorry, 500-foot radius doesn't seem like a burdensome request. And then finally, this is about transparency. I guess I'm speaking and not asking questions. Did we have speakers on this?
We don't have any speakers, so you're totally okay.
Sorry, okay. I just thought I'd bring that up. And again, last but not least, this is about transparency, and West Hollywood is known for its engaged community, except that, except when we don't tell them what's going on. And so I don't, I don't see where this is such a large burden for somebody who is applying for a development agreement that is going to increase the value of the property by millions and millions of dollars, whereas the impacts of a project that's going to be much larger than what was in our zoning ordinance or in our general plan is, you know, that impact is also much, much greater than an impact that everyone is expecting because that's what the zoning is. because that's what the zoning is. So, you know, I think that, I know that in staff report, it said something about some of the views. They, people don't have the view of, say, the billboard, but, you know, you're going all the ways around. And there is, there is going to be somebody who is impacted by the light of that billboard or by the traffic that's generated by a project or, you know, whether it's parking impacts or whatever the impacts are. Light, parking, traffic, whatever. I know that people have been affected by sunset billboards on DeLong Prairie. And yet, we don't consider them in our, in the, because of the radius. So I would ask that my colleagues consider, you know, 1,000-foot radius and if not, at least consider a 750 as a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Erickson or Vice Mayor Heilman?
I don't support this. I don't want to get into the guise of, I mean, as serving on the planning commission as I know Councilmember Meister has, as well as seeing how this gone, I think that what staff provided more than answered any additional questions I have. And I would like to keep it at 500 feet, and that's where I'm at tonight.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Hang jumped up. So Vice Mayor Heilman?
Councilmember Hang.
He's in the bathroom.
Okay. So I agree with Councilmember Erickson. We previously approved a 500-foot radius. We asked staff to give us more information. Based on this information, I don't think we should change our 500-foot radius. To me, this is not a question about the cost of the noticing, which I agree with Councilmember Meister is relatively negligible. To me, it's more about, is it necessary? I don't think this is about transparency. We already notice a radius of 500 feet around the development. We also require the site to be noticed. We do have public hearings for these projects with development agreements. Not only does it have to go to the planning commission, but the development agreement has to be approved by council. So it will necessarily come before the City Council. I'm fine with leaving the radius at 500 foot. The notion that development agreements increase the value, that's true of all developments. They increase the value of the property. So it would make no sense to me to increase the radius for projects with development agreements and not do it for other projects that result in significant increases in value for the property owner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hang.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any, like, tangible proof that, or evidence that increasing it to 750 or 1,000 would increase any type of participation at all?
Not to our knowledge at this, no.
Thank you. So what is the state minimum requirement?
Can you repeat the question?
What is the state minimum requirement?
300 feet.
And what is our requirement here?
500 feet.
So does that mean that we are meeting the state's minimum requirement and then some?
Correct. We're exceeding the state's minimum requirement.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I feel that we should leave this policy as is. Increasing it would not yield additional results and could be burdensome on staff time. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. I see a motion and a second. I am in agreement with the 500. And as someone who is interested in seeing this information, I feel like the decision to make, to leave it at the 500 feet continues to serve our city well. I, you know, we heard tonight in a number of ways that despite citywide mailers, despite numerous postings, years of conversation about a topic in town, there are still people who are saying that community members don't hear about things. And I believe that there is just a bigger barrier of engagement that the public sits with that regardless of how far we extend radii, there's other things that are those barriers. So I think the 500 feet has served the billboard project, especially when it comes to this conversation well. And I saw a motion and a second already for vote, but wanted to make sure we're wrapped with discussion, Vice Mayor?
I just want to clarify. The motion is to just receive and file the report and not change.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Don't even think we needed a real vote on that, but that's right. Okay, terrific. Thank you, staff. We'll move to item E2, Progress Updates and Material Selection for the Hart Park Improvement Project. I see our staff representative team coming down for this item. And I do see one member of the public signed up to speak. Was there a presentation that you're providing us tonight? Do we, would like the brief presentation? I'm seeing yes from one member of council. So we'll go ahead and take the presentation, and then we'll invite our member of the public to come speak. And then we'll get into it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Rick Abramson, Manager of the Urban Design and Architecture Studio. I'm here with Helen Collins, our Director of Public Works, and Steve Campbell, our Deputy City Manager. Tonight before you is a progress update and discussion of the material selection for Hart Park. We appeared previously, and the council approved the design. And so the one remaining element of discussion that evening was whether to go with synthetic turf or wood chips or some alternative. The council directed staff to do additional research and outreach and look at if there were any other materials other than wood chips that are organic or natural and would be acceptable. Working with the consultant team, staff was able to identify one other potential system that seems to hit at least as many of the markers as possible in terms of being organic and safe and readily maintainable. There is no perfect material in this case. There's pros and cons to each. But as part of the updates, we met with the ad hoc council's ad hoc Hart Park Subcommittee, two meetings to discuss alternatives, some minor adjustments to the reconfiguration. And the recommendation tonight is to move forward with an engineered wood fiber system, which is a, about a 12-inch-thick system, still with a wood chip type of material, but it has underlayment and drainage built into it. And it's a dense material that, when compact, actually meets disability needs as well for mobility considerations. It is a little bit more of an installation, but the long-term maintenance apparently is less. We have talked to other jurisdictions who seem to be very happy with the material. But it is natural and organic, so it will need to be raked and sort of leveled on occasion, too. And I think the manufacturer says it can be replaced up to 24 months. I think that would be longer than we anticipate. I think it might be a couple times a year, but still fewer cycles than perhaps what is happening right now. We've worked with the Subcommittee, and as I said, there have been some adjustments. There have been a number of comments received from the public over the course of this. And we're happy to answer any specific questions that council may have. I will show you one image of the recommended material tonight, the engineered wood fiber, and how it's a layered system but effectively looks like, very similar to the wood chips that are out there right now. We've also got some updated renderings that we thought we would share with the council, too, of how the design is progressing. We're hoping to be into Plan Check prior to the end of the year, with bidding following that, and hope to be under construction next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And unless there's any questions at this time from the council, we'll go to the member of the public who signed up to speak. I see just one member, Bob Claster, who'll join us for public comment. And then we'll get into any discussion up here. Great shirt. Says I like dogs for those who can't see.
So did Jane Goodall, by the way. She liked dogs better than chimps, she said. All right. Wait, don't, I haven't started yet. That's not fair. Can you start me over there with that timer, please?
It may be difficult to clear at this point because we started, but I'll acknowledge your six seconds.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank council for finally, after exhaustive evidence was presented and many months of campaigning and protest, acceding to the community's overwhelming desire not to have artificial turf polluting our park. They are to be congratulated and thanked for, in most cases, considering the overwhelming scientific evidence, doing the research, and finding an acceptable and organic alternative. We do not understand why this alternative is not also being used at Plummer Park or West Hollywood Park, but that's a little beside the point tonight. I want to speak from the heart about this entire process. Throughout it, the vibrant and active community of Hart Park users has been excluded from the planning process. And when we did show up, we were treated as inconvenient adversaries. At no time was there ever an atmosphere of collaboration, cooperation, or participation with us. Plans were drawn up that were not posted at the park so that the community could make their feelings known. Meetings were held for which there was no outreach to the user community. I recognize none of my fellow community members here tonight, and I can tell you that that's because the overwhelming sentiment among those I talked to is one of fatalism and resignation. They're just going to do what they want to do, and they don't care what we want. Did anyone ask for a plaza which will only attract the unhoused and require additional security? Of course not. Had any of you ever actually spent time with us and our dogs at the park, you'd see how utterly unnecessary it is to divide the dog play area into two separate, smaller-sized, separated areas. But it has been painfully obvious that you're going to do what you want to do regardless of our feelings. Hell, one of the two council members on the park Subcommittee doesn't even have a dog, respectfully. It's very disheartening and utterly democratic, and it has really bummed us all out because it feels like [beep] nobody cared what we felt.
Thank you. With that, we'll come back to council discussion and deliberation. Would any of my colleagues like to begin? And specifically thinking about the two members who served on that Subcommittee, if there's any comments or reflections you'd like to begin with? You don't have to. Just didn't know where else to start.
I'm just glad the debate about the chips is done. It's over. And also, just want to bring up that the idea of, one of the exciting things about the dog area, areas, is that it's separated by a fence that's going to be movable. And so another discussion that can be had, as this, you know, once we get there, is programming of the, of the two parks, whether they should be open most of the time and then have, you know, the separation so that people who aren't comfortable with being in a one-size-fits-all park will have that opportunity to play or the opposite. So those are still questions that I think we can still address. It's too soon to worry about it right now. But I'm very supportive. I think it's going to be beautiful.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the robust presentation. How many meetings have been held regarding this design regarding the park?
Including this one, I think we counted 18 total meetings on Hart Park. That includes not only city council meetings, public facilities, Disability Advisory Board, Older Advisory Board, Historic Preservation Commission. We also met with the Sunset Bid folks. We met with the Actors Studio. We met with a group from the Dog Guardian advocates. So we've tried to do as intensive outreach from as many voices as possible.
Thank you. And it's to my understanding that a sign has been posted at the park, right, to update the community in terms of what the city is doing?
Yes, there were both flyers on the entry gates posted and then a poster showing the latest images that are in the staff report as well.
So I do appreciate staff taking that direction from the community members. And that's just another layer of outreach that staff has been doing to outreach to the community. So thank you. I'm actually really excited about the design of the park. And can you confirm if the play area was expanded in this most recent design iteration?
Yes, as part of the process, there were comments about the size of the park. And we went back to the consultant and tried to adjust the geometries as best we can. But in the end, the new park cumulatively will be 23% bigger than the current area. The larger dog play area will be slightly smaller than the current overall. But when you take the small and the large together, it's going to be significantly bigger. And as Councilmember Meister said, one of the sort of creative moves in the design was to create an opening between the two so that there could be opportunities to have a very large player with the length, like if you're playing with the ball right now, we measured the diagonal about 85 feet. I think the new length is going to be something like 140 feet. So it's significantly enlarged as a whole.
And then if I recall correctly from the last Subcommittee meeting, there were community members that were, that had expressed excitement for the retractable gate because some of those owners, some of those pet parents had small dogs that they were afraid, you know, to be in the same play area as larger dogs, right? Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes, Councilmember. We have heard from small dog guardians. And in fact, temporarily, the AIDS Memorial Area was fenced with a gate to grow grass because it had eroded, and it was mistaken as a small dog park. And so we found a number of small dog guardians going in there because they didn't want to interact with the larger dogs. So we have heard that voiced, yes.
And I actually also want to thank you and your team for bringing samples of the engineered wood fibers to pass along to show members of the community who were at the meeting so they could touch it, see it, feel it, et cetera. So I think that was very helpful for the community members. And yes, I don't have a dog, but I have a cat, and I do walk my cat sometimes. So thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
We would just like to say the City of West Hollywood unequivocally supports cats as well as other animal companions of all sorts. So your cat is, love is love at Danny's, so whatever type of animal you want to have. And take it to the dog park if you want. I hate wood chips, so I think they're disgusting. And I would never take Winnie to Hart Park. Bob, you know this. I said this to you, and we had a lovely meeting, and we talked about many things. But I do want to thank Bob and the community members for their activism and the work that they did. Bob actually helped educate me on more things than I actually cared to know about in the binder that you provided, I think, last year as well. I am disappointed with some of the processes that have gone out in the community meetings. I remember I did go to a community meeting in 2020, right before the pandemic at Hart Park. And things obviously go with the flow and how things happen. But I do think the community, you know, ultimately does feel left out. And I understand that was never the intention. But as we do more infrastructure and projects, the more we can get out, the better. I'm glad. I don't know what the synthetic wood chip looks like. So I'm just going to trust my two colleagues on the Subcommittee for it and glad that this can get done. Maybe you could put it in my mailbox, and I can touch it when I go in the next time. But I hope that we can bring this, this dog war to an end, wood chip war to an end here.
Vice Mayor Heilman? No comments? Okay, terrific. I want to first start by thanking staff for your work. I want to first start by thanking staff for your work, 18 meetings, no small feat and all the prep that goes into it, and the many years of planning to get to this point. I want to also thank the subcommittee for your leadership. And it sounds like you're a disbanded subcommittee, maybe after this decision, so kudos to you. And of course, the community, who I certainly hear the frustration about what the feeling of engagement and extension of information and outreach has looked like. But I also want to thank you because you took a hold of the moment, and you really steered the ship in a different direction. And had it not been for that surge of energy that came in and the intention that you brought to making sure that we all had that education, this could have looked a very different way at the end of the day. So we sit here with a project that I think reflects the voices that we've heard from, from the community, and creates a very different and unique space in the city, one that I'm looking forward to spending more time in. I know when we inaugurated the Rainbow Dog neon sign, it was a very special moment for the community and one of very few moments that the city really has to rally in that very special space. So as the plaza gets updated, as that very incredible AIDS monument gets updated, and as the whole park gets this refresh, I believe it'll serve the folks who have been there and who know how special it is, and invite a bigger sense of community into that space as well. So I'm really grateful that this project is moving forward and looking forward to seeing its next steps. Thank you so much. And I also want to thank our government affairs liaison, Hernan Molina, who's not represented at this table, but has certainly been a part of the project team and advocating for funding for this project from all various levels of government. So shout out to Hernan for that work, too. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. We're ready for a vote. Terrific. Thank you once again. We moved item E3 to consent, so we're moving to item E4, the agreement without athlete fund to sponsor Pride House LA West Hollywood. Wait for our team to join us. Okay. Yeah, I don't know that we need a whole presentation. We held it back for a question, so we'll allow Councilmember Meister to jump in. Thank you. There's no public comment, so we're clear.
Okay, good. So I just, I went through the agreement. I just want to make sure, and also so that the community hears that the, the two, since we're talking about dog parks, that the dog parks will not be impacted by this, by this, you know, any of the events that Pride House does, because you know to a dog, 17 days is like four months, so.
Thank you. Good evening. Megan Reith, Event Services Supervisor. So subsequent to the agreement before you, tonight, we will execute a use, a permit-to-use city property agreement without athlete fund, and that will define the dog park impacts. I don't think we anticipate that the dog parks will be closed for the duration of the event, but with any large event during the build, there may be intermittent impact at times. We will, as we, you know, work with the producers to schedule large infrastructure coming into the park, there may be times that the dog parks do need to be closed intermittently. Like with any major event, we will make sure that, you know, they are accessible to the public as long as is safely possible.
So what I would suggest, since we're ways out from this, is to ask Helen's team to look at it and see how the entrances, they can put alternative entrances on the other side of each of the dog parks. I know one would be fairly easy, the other one maybe not as easy. The small dog park, you know, could go on the north side, and I don't know about the large dog park, but, but we did, we were able to keep it open by having that, that extra sort of gate on the, on the east side.
Yes, yes.
Have my direction straight. So, so that was one of my concerns. And then in the, in the agreement in attachment A, on page five, we talk about, or I should say the, hang on one second, let me just get there. We, we talk a lot about what the eligible uses of the sponsorship fee and, and what it's, what it cannot be used for, but you don't really talk about what it can be used for. Is that pretty standard to not, to not include that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, I do know what you're talking about. So we have gone through the eligible uses without athlete fund. This agreement this evening, we're asking that the council approve it as deformed as final negotiations take place, and we can certainly work with the city attorney's office to, to see if they advise being more explicit in that area.
Okay, because that would, that would be one of my concerns. And then on page six and page 11, where you talk about cancellation or termination, I just want to also confirm there, and again, maybe you talked to the city attorney about it, is that any funds that would disperse but not spent should be returned to the city? I know you, you bring it up in other places, but specifically on page six, where you talk about cancellation, and page 11, where you talk about termination, it isn't, it isn't explicit. And that, and to me, I just want, I want us to be very specific about it. And the same thing on page seven, on, on the paragraph C, it says that the producers shall provide financial performance data within 30 days of the event. And I'm just wondering, can we also make sure that that's, if it, if there's cancellation or termination, that that same requirement, that within 30 days of cancellation or 30 days of termination, that they provide financial performance data as well?
Absolutely. We can work with the city attorney's office on those items.
Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or concerns to address, Vice Mayor?
No, I'm, I'm moving that we approve with the direction that's been given by our colleague.
Thank you. See a second to that motion as well?
May I say one thing?
Oh, please.
I would just, if it's, it's possible to give direction in this item or for the council just to have the comms department make sure that they're doing all that they can to cross-promote Pride House through city channels, since it literally says Pride House LA WeHo on it. And so I would love to make sure some of the programming that they're doing leading up to the events also go onto our channel specifically, given the great staff report regarding pride itself and the impressions that was able to occur, talking about Pride House in terms of the Olympics might be a great tie-in. So if my colleagues are okay with it, just general direction for Pride House cross-communication as their events, specifically around fundraising as well as other community opportunities. I know there's an incredible event with a speed skater coming forth, first openly gay speed skater, Sid will correct me if I'm wrong, coming forth, and it's a great opportunity for further awareness about Pride House. So if my colleagues are okay with that, the comms department to put that stuff out would be helpful.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to a vote. Thank you to the staff team, and thank you to the champions of Pride House. We'll move to item F5. Seeing a number of these items under F, move to consent. F5 is the audit of vacant residential and commercial units. Councilmember Meister, I know this is your item. We do have a number of public comments, so would you like to give us a brief description? And then we'll move into public comment before we come back to deliberation.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I'll talk about the benefits of doing this. First of all, as we all know, vacant units impact community vitality, and long-term vacancies, both residential and commercial, diminish neighborhood vibrancy, hurt local businesses, and can contribute to blight and nuisance conditions. Economic and public safety concerns, empty storefronts weaken business corridors, reduce foot traffic, and increase demands on code enforcement and public safety resources, and we're all very well aware of that. Housing supply implications. Residential units left vacant for extended periods reduce the supply of available housing and distort our understanding of actual rental market conditions. Current, our current tracking has some gaps. We have the existing, we have the vacant property registry, but that only captures properties that are substantially vacant. There's no system to track individual vacant units within occupied buildings. The audit will fill a key information gap. It will quantify how many units, commercial and residential, are sitting empty and where they are located, understanding why units remain vacant. Hopefully, the audit will explore reasons for long-term vacancies such as pending redevelopment, market speculation, or ownership strategies, helping the city to design targeted policy responses. It supports broader city goals. The data will inform initiatives like the zoning improvement project and other housing and economic development efforts. It will actually give us a, a, a better understanding of the current situation. And data-driven policymaking, you know I'm all about the numbers, the audit provides a factual, or will provide a factual foundation for potential programs or regulations to discourage unnecessary vacancies and promote active use of property. And it will promote a more complete picture of our community by understanding the full extent and causes of vacancy. The city can better plan for economic resilience, housing availability, and neighborhood well-being.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. We'll go to public comment now. I see Wendy Goldman, followed by Anita Goswami, and then we have a number of citizen position slips.
Good evening. Wendy Goldman, Cynthia Sunset Neighborhood Watch, resident of West Hollywood. The assessment of vacancies is important now more than ever. We don't have a housing shortage. We have a crisis of unlisted residential vacancies. Landlords have found a way to circumvent policies by keeping units unlisted. Without an accurate count of the vacancies, developers take advantage of state laws and tenants lose amenities. For example, in my 38-unit building on the 9,000 block of Harret Street, at least 19 units are vacant. No new tenants have moved in for five years. 16 of us are over 60 and face safety risks. There are other vacant properties on Harret, including the long-abandoned Craftsman and Duplex, where 18 tenants were evicted more than 20 years ago. An eight-unit building at 9,004 Harret has remained vacant for years. An easier way to collect residential data is via U.S. Postal Service carriers. They know exactly how many vacancies exist, who has moved in or out, and whose mail is undeliverable or forwarded. After lengthy periods of uncertainty, it's time for the city to hold owners liable and to enforce vacancy tax policies that reduce the number of units kept off-market. They artificially inflate the ability of new residents to move in and give an unrealistic economic picture to investors. Earlier this year, in response to local wildfires, council voted to allow short-term rentals for less than one year. Did the city manager provide follow-up report of this urgency policy? Are short-term rentals providing housing to those displaced by the fires or vacationers? Compounding the off-market problem is the development of ADUs. Please prevent renters from losing amenities like parking as ADUs are permitted. Our city streets cannot accommodate additional vehicles. Thank you.
Anita Goswami?
Anita Goswami, longtime resident of West Hollywood. I strongly support this because the city is spending significant resources of staff time and money to review and approve development projects. You're pushing densification, you're ruining neighborhoods via reducing planning reviews, notification, stripping parking. This is all ruining neighborhoods. What you're doing is you are taking away, and you're taking away based on some fluffy idea. Actually, but anyway, these efforts, this is back to what is the city actually doing? What city staff doing? You spoke earlier about, you know, time being wasted at planning commission and at city council. Well, let's start focusing that time and that effort on what we really have, getting a real baseline of what's going on in the city. I've been walking around the city a lot lately, all over the city, not just my local neighborhood, and I'm, yes, I'm wearing my Neighborhood Watch t-shirt, but looking at other neighborhoods because we are all residents of West Hollywood. It is not one specific area, it's across all of West Hollywood. And we need to understand how much of that space is actually vacant, because we can walk by it and we see it. I see it every day. But we need to look into why we have so much of it. We don't need more development, and we need to better use what we have. And that's both on a residential and a commercial level. We don't want West Hollywood to become a ghost town full of empty storefronts and empty apartments priced too high to rent. We're already seeing that with businesses on Sunset and Santa Monica, as well as the residential streets. Again, looking for a clear, realistic, transparent baseline and analysis, and that means transparency throughout the process, not just direction, and then a PowerPoint several months later. We've got excellent city staff. Let's get them working on what really matters to this city, what really matters to the people here, and put on hold the outside interests that just look at us as a piggy bank to take over. Let's do this for us. Thank you.
Thank you both for your public comments. We'll go to citizen position slips.
Mayor, we have one, Kevin Burton, in support of item F5.
Thank you. We'll come to council for discussion and deliberation. Yeah, Councilmember Erickson?
So, well, I remember, I don't know if we both did the apartment registry together. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm generally in support of this. How do we get, I saw something that came in from the Chamber of Commerce. How do we make sure that larger building units that were addressed in that letter can comply, and we can use that data correctly and not have it skew anything?
And see, this is the, one of the gaps, is that the registry is great because when someone moves in, but when someone moves out, we don't know that. There's no registration when they move out. So that's part of this, the issue, and, and why we need to look at what is actually vacant. We cannot tell that from the registrations.
Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, I, I support the goal, but not necessarily the mechanism that is reflected in the staff report. We already get information, sort of collective information, from our economic development leader, Laura is here, on what our vacancy rate is, what our commercial vacancy rate is. My concern, and I think the concern that you're trying to address, is the, the notable commercial vacancies that seem to be vacant for long periods of time, that may be being kept off the market. Those are the ones that I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about a vacancy that is temporary, where one business goes out and another one is working on its tenants' improvements, and it sometimes takes longer than we would like for them to get up and running. And the same is true with residential units. I'm, I'm not concerned with the vacancy that occurs because somebody moves out and two months later, somebody moves in. That's going to occur in, in any healthy environment with apartments. What I think we're concerned about, and what you're concerned about, is what Wendy is identifying, property owners who are keeping residential units off of the market and not renting them out, not making them available for rent. So the, the idea of an audit seems like a different, or, or a mechanism that might spend a lot of time and money looking at units that we're not really concerned about. I'm concerned, and I, I want to figure out a mechanism and ask our staff to figure out a mechanism, how do we identify residential units that are being kept off the market for a substantial period of time? How do we identify those commercial units that are being kept off-market and there don't appear to be any realistic efforts to rent them? Those are the things that I think contribute to our, our, our concerns and the community's concerns, not the, the occasional vacancy that's going to occur no matter what.
Yeah, and I agree with you that the, part of the problem is, again, it's, if you look at whatever the numbers are from that, from the organization that puts out what the vacancy rates are, at least with the residential, they don't know. Because, again, they're going by what's, what's been registered, and, and since something was registered, someone may have left. I can tell you even just in my, and just within three blocks where I walk the dog, there is a building that has been vacant. It's a three-unit, it's a triplex that's been vacant for
It's a three-unit, it's a triplex that's been vacant for over five years. No signs of anything, like anything happening. On my street, a single-family home, the person had, was asked to move when the property changed hands. It has been vacant since mid-COVID with a sign coming soon. And then even on, and then on Huntley, another building that has two units vacant, I mean, for years. It just, so I'm just trying to figure out how, I agree, I don't want this to be an expensive endeavor, but I want it to be an effective, accurate endeavor so that we can really see what our current situation is. And especially as we go into talking about ZIP, you know, we need to know what the actual, what the reality is, and not base it on some, you know, magic number that happens from, you know, percentages that some real estate organizations sends us.
So are you comfortable with asking our staff to come up with a mechanism to identify what I think we're trying to identify?
Yes.
As you described, the rental units that are being kept off the market for long periods of time? I don't think-
With no sign of development.
Right.
And with no sign of movement.
Right. And I know we've had concerns in the past with new developments and the slow time it takes them for what they call absorption and getting new tenants in there. I think if they're actively trying to lease those, those are not concerning.
Right. That's not the target.
Okay.
I see Councilmember Heng, and I have some comments as well. Councilmember Heng?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this item forward. I do appreciate the spirit of the item, and, you know, we can't fix what we can't measure, right? So that's the whole purpose of this item. And I think it's a good proactive step forward for the city. Thank you.
I have some concerns based on what was written in the staff report, mostly with regards to the timing. We have agreed as a matter of council priorities to make sure that these aren't things that staff would set off to do in this moment. And this is very much a crisis of in this moment, and as you said, because of the pandemic. So my concern with what the mechanism might look like could be very different in a moment of time that is different from where we're currently at. So that, it's the timing of what this would look like, and the idea that we're going to try to measure vacancy, which is going to take time to do, and that could change over that course of time. So we're not going to be able to get a point-in-time count of vacancy, and that this is coming from what feels like a momentary crisis. It's not real, so that's, I have a challenge about that. We're not going to be, it's unlike the homelessness count where we're going to go out one night and count and then have a sense of what that data looks like.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is that, like, if you look at what Wendy Goldman brought up, her building, you know, half-empty for how many years? It's not really, it's not something that's happening over one night. This is, this is years in the making. So I don't, I don't see it as a point of ti, in time. I see this as, we need to do something about this now because it is continuing and it's getting worse.
And I, the commercial vacancy aspect of it, I think, is differently complicated. I hear you on the residential side of it. I would wonder, in the similar approach that we took when we started to rein in short-term rentals and Airbnb's, code enforcement was looking at this in a much more significant way. I wonder if there is some sort of call-out mechanism that the community could help with. We sort of had, being community members, that were identifying potential short-term violation, rental violations within their own buildings, and that helped us create a paper, you know, a trail to follow for some of that enforcement mechanism. It does feel a bit like whack-a-mole, but what I'm hearing in the staff report is how difficult it'll be to, you know, comb over all of the city. And I think what we are trying to get to is an understanding of why this is occurring and what controls we have as a city to change that. And I don't think it's going to take an entire city review to understand some of that scale of control that we may be able to differently impose. So just trying to see down the road, what are we trying to get to? We're trying to get to a situation where we, as council, are able to do something differently about the circumstances, and with enough data and information, we may be able to determine that. I don't know that we need a full vacancy count of the city, or that that is the thing that will become helpful to our information. Is that making sense? Am I saying it well?
Yeah, well, like anything, like market research, it's, you know, you can, you can take a sample of that and project, if you're comfortable with that sample. And it should be scientifically done and not, not an engaged, you know, online survey that anybody can, can answer. We should make sure that it is, you know, residents and businesspeople that are, that are responding from the city.
Were there any other comments from my colleagues? So, yeah, I'm, it sounds like the direction that we're getting towards is to not maybe follow what is directly outlined in this report, but ask staff to come back with something that would help us better assess vacant residential units and commercial units without maybe a whole citywide approach to that, but some sort of mechanism that we can use to under, or to capture the information that's happening potentially from community, you know, outreach to us as a city, and then staff can pursue that and look into that more.
Yeah, and I'm happy to work with them if they want to bounce ideas off me.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. And you're supportive of that, Vice Mayor? Is that, okay. Any disagreement, concern, yeah, city manager?
Just to go back to the timing aspect. So as stated in the staff analysis section, right now, as you all have said, we don't have a current mechanism, and so that would have to be developed, and that's going to take some time. As stated in the staff analysis section, this will be part of the work plan for fiscal year 2027. So at that time, we'd come back with the mechanism.
The only problem with that is that, you know, we're talking about changing our zoning over, across the entire city, possibly, possibly. So in order to do that realistically, and to concern that that's not going to, you know, in some ways, maybe it will help, you know, council in 2040, but it's not going to help us with direction for policies that we're making, you know, this year and next year.
But if I may, the ZIP zoning improvement program is a mandate under our housing element, which is part of a statewide requirement for us as a city. That requirement includes 3,966 new units of building. It doesn't say that we can apply existing units that happen to be found vacant towards that count. It is about new-
I understand that, but it also will, it would help us to know where they are and, and what, and at what affordability level they are. Because even though we have requirements from the state, I don't know, I think we have, we know our city better than our state does, or we should want to know our city better than our state does, that we should have that information. We should, we should be able to say, you know, we have enough luxury units, 10% of them are vacant because they're waiting for a $4,500 a month rent to come around, but we have a shortage of affordable housing. So, I mean, I just, I just think we, we needed to inform our policies moving forward. That's, that's the bottom line for me.
And I don't disagree with that. I just don't want it to get conflated with the aim of ZIP and where that's coming from, because that is about recognizing the state's overall housing shortage, the region's overall housing shortage, which is in the 600,000s of units. So regardless of how many units we may find vacant in this city, that context still exists in the bigger region. And so I do agree that it is important to have an understanding of what is creating the long-term vacancies in some of these residential properties. And my guess is it has largely to do with the decision-making of property owners and some of their poor decision-making processes and, you know, selfishness that isn't contributing to the larger beneficial, you know, what's happening in the city in a beneficial way. But I don't know that that is something that we should think about when it comes to ZIP and the zoning improvement. It just, they should be kept separate. And I want to say that for the public's knowledge, too, so we're not conflating this idea of enough vacancy existing to account for the housing that we need to account for.
I agree with you, Mayor, but I also think this is an issue, certainly for people in Wendy's building. It's a crisis in that building, and we need to get to the bottom of it. And with respect to commercial vacancies, we, we need to address the areas where there have been long-term vacancies that adversely impact the vitality of our community. Laura was kind enough to email me or send me the current vacancy rate, which is about 10.5 for retail, 12.7 for office. So it has come down from the last report we saw. I know that we made some changes to the Pacific Design Center master plan to help address some of the office vacancies at their facilities. And clearly, we need to keep working at it, but our vacancy rates for the commercial and retail are not that out of line with other communities. That doesn't mean that there aren't areas that are of significant concern, as well as properties that seem to be kept off the market for long periods of time that creates problems for the community. So I agree with Councilmember Meister that we need to try to move this forward as quickly as possible.
Councilmember Erickson?
And I just think the ultimate thing that we have to realize is that people are sitting on vacant properties just because it's cheaper to keep a building vacant than it is to actually put people in it most of the time. And when we see a lot of the vacancy tax conversations, and as we have kind of talked about here multiple ways, most of those costs on the taxes get just passed through to the other tenants as a result, and so tenants actually end up paying more. And I, and, and, you know, I don't want to call it my friend Wendy, but, you know, people aren't moving into her building not because it's not, you know, a place where you can live and be in West Hollywood. It's because there's problems that I think have persisted, and thankfully, with her work in the Neighborhood Watch and trying to improve her street, and the city needs to play a part in that, it's tried to help the vitality of the neighborhood. But her building is more costly just sitting there, no matter if there are people there or not, because it's worth a lot of money sitting right below Sunset. And having people in there is one thing, to provide homes, but we aren't landlords or trying to cash in on a lot of different ways. And frankly, the social good of actually providing housing isn't being done, no matter what they do. And so, you know, I don't want to place the blame all on one entity, but rents are too high, and the state is the one that controls a lot of commercial as well as residential rent restrictions. That's why we need to overturn Costa-Hawkins, the Ellis Act, and advocate for continued commercial lease rental ways in which we can adopt those locally. So, and that's never going to change until the state actually moves.
What I'm hearing from staff is that the soonest this would be able to move forward is 2027, but you're requesting it move sooner. How do we square that?
Maybe we, we refer it to our budget subcommittee and ask the city manager to look at this in the context of the other programs and ask our budget subcommittee if there are ways to expedite this. But it does sound like there's agreement by everyone on the council that this is valuable information that we need to gather. And how quickly we can do that depends a lot on our other priorities. So I'm at least expressing the view that we should try to-
Do you have clarity on the direction in the motion, Chief City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. So this will be deliberated with our budget subcommittee to expedite the process, and we are all in agreement, the council is in agreement, that this needs to move forward.
Yeah, to discuss avenues for expediting. And this meaning some, yeah, potential version of a mechanism, not, yeah, this is the report was given. Great.
I think the city attorney-
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, item four, or F6 was moved to consent. We're on item F7, and I believe Councilmember Meister, you had some questions on this item? And I see a public commenter. Was that correct, Anita? Did you sign up to speak on this? Do you want to allow a public comment? Anita Goswami, please come up for your public comment.
Hi there. Anita Goswami, longtime resident. I agree with the person who submitted public comment against this. I don't want my city taxes going for this. West Hollywood is a city that was built on activism. That's exactly what we did. This is how we started. I've been around since the early days of West Hollywood. We don't need to go elsewhere for this. One of the things that I feel is if our city's leadership feels they need to network and connect more, if you need to be out there and that's what you think is important for your career, and that's what you think is important for you personally, have those organizations like NetRoots come to West Hollywood. We've got plenty of hotel space. We've got great conference space. Come here and hold your conference. You can all go and do that there. That's, you know, and then you can go and do that networking here locally. I think that's something that we should really look at encouraging and promoting, that this is what West Hollywood does. Also, I strongly review, reviewing that list of organizations on a, on a regular basis as far as who went, what funds were spent, because when I went to conferences, I had to submit a report of what I accomplished, whom I met, and the benefits to my funding organization. And I think for all of these, like whether it's NetRoots Nation, any of these kinds of organizations that I see there, because I was looking at, I was looking at them and looking at their conferences. Okay, if West Hollywood is paying for those, then let's look at what kind of benefit that we are getting for that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, and this is just a general question, not necessarily directed at NetRoots, although I don't really know what they do. But so it says in the staff report that, you know, it's a nonprofit organization that provides training resources and networking opportunities. My question, I guess, is to this, maybe the city attorney, is that I've always been under the assumption that we, or I've been told, that we're, we can't say, for example, take classes, educational classes, because it's, for, for public officials, it's considered a gift of public funds. So why would training at a conference be any different than being able to take a class at UCLA or something, in land use, or, or something that's, that applies to, you know, being a, being a public official in a city?
Which you can do per the benefits that you get as a city council member, thanks to the organizational standards that we've approved. So you actually do get to take those educational classes for free.
That's, that's not what I've been told.
Well, I helped negotiate that when I was the Labor President.
I think staff can do it, but I don't know that council can. I'll leave it to the city attorney.
Training classes and conferences that have educational components to them. I don't know exactly the specific classes that you wanted to take at different educational facilities. I'm not familiar with that issue having come up before.
Yeah, I know I- Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just, as an example, as soon as I, you know, became a council member, I participated in USC's executive leadership curriculum, which is a program for elected officials out of USC, but that was paid for by the city in order to help support my leadership on this council. And I think a number of the conferences that we attend have that sort of baked-in training and education as part of what it means to serve your role in the city. And I think the opportunity of going to a conference, wherever it may be, is about helping bring back things to the city, as I think we've done in many cases here, which is why I would support, you know, bringing more opportunities to this body and the future bodies.
Okay, well, I was, then I either misunderstood, was given wrong information. When I first became a council member, I asked if council was allowed to get tuition reimbursement, okay? And I was told no, that it's considered a gift of public funds. So that's, that's my point.
I thought we were, but maybe, I can, you know, well.
Staff is, but, but not council.
Yeah, I don't believe council members get tuition reimbursement, but we'll verify that. But that's different than the training at conferences and things for-
Right, but, but the idea being that you're getting educated, the reason you have to pay tuition for something is to get educated in an area, say, that is, that is, you know, applies to what we're doing here. And obviously, trainings at conferences and conferences are not cheap. So that is my point.
Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, the, the list of organizations that we have is quite long, and it allows the council members to go to various organizations, to conferences where there are workshops and training programs. And there are, you know, as you can see in the agenda item, a number of different organizations. I, I think it is valuable for council members- I, I think it is valuable for council members to go and to learn from other elected officials and from other experts in the field on different issues. A number of us have gone to the Victory Fund Conference, where there are a lot of focus on LGBTQ issues, but sometimes on other issues like housing issues. A number of us have gone to the National League of Cities or the League of California Cities. I'm supportive of this. My one concern is that this seems like it's very close to the edge to something that is more political rather than more generally educational. So I think that's something that we all need to be careful about moving forward, that we're attending conferences on behalf of the city that are really designed to be more generally educational on city issues and public service rather than that is really enhancing our roles in the political realm. Because we shouldn't be sponsoring, you know, we, we wouldn't support the council member going to the Democratic Party Convention or the Republican Convention or any other political convention. So that, that was my only concern about this. But I looked over the program, and it does appear that there are significant substantive workshops that focus on issues. So I'm comfortable with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. I am generally in support of this item. Like the mayor, I actually just attended the USC Executive Education Forum over the weekend, and I learned a lot in terms of public policy and what the knowledge I will bring back to the council here with my colleagues. So I look forward to Councilmember Erickson going to this event and then sharing what he learns with us. Thank you.
Just, yeah, go ahead.
It's for everyone, so you want to go together, let's go together. I do support, you know, I mean, look, you're serving in the city council, our, my, whatever, $250 paycheck ain't paying my rent, right? So I would fully, I mean, I know it's a whole, someone will call me a socialist eventually, but I think that if you're up here and you're serving your community, you want to go further education, the, I think cities, states, schools should be free, so I support you in whatever way we can figure that out. But yeah, this is for everybody. I mean, that's the best part about this list is, you know, a lot of the work that we do is doing it. And the reason why this came to my attention is because I had flagged it earlier this year when registration was open, but of course, completely forgot because I was looking at the program. And then when I was looking at the program, like Vice Mayor Heilmann said, and then when I noticed a bunch of my colleagues from across the country going to very specific panels on housing affordability, trans rights issues, and other things that seemed like a different flavor than the Victory Fund, that's where it flagged for me, and I put it on the agenda for that, that reason.
I've attended NetRoots several times prior to my role on this council, and I think it should have long been on this list. So I'm really glad that you thought to do that. Thank you. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Thank you. That is our vote. We're on our last item, item F8, appointment to the Planning Commission. This item did not get tabled, and just speaking to my desire to see it not tabled, I do know that the Planning Commissioners have a heavy agenda. It has been a very full, the commission has been in practice for a while, and to miss an individual is a challenge for that commission. And I think that we have, and people have applied to it. It was posted, it went through that process. To delay the process is a disservice to the commission. And I know we're also nearly at the place of having full appointments to all the commissions, which would allow us to then recognize the outgoing commissioners. And I've been getting a few questions from the community about when we're going to be acknowledging our outgoing commissioners, because it has taken us a very long year to fill all these commission and advisory board roles and make an appointment. So that is what is prompting my feeling of, we have an opportunity to take action. Let us see if we are able to take action tonight. Let's keep this on the agenda and see how we can move forward. So just wanted to speak to that. There's no need for staff report on this? No? Okay. We do have a public comment, and then Vice Mayor Heilmann, do you want to speak with a public?
I'll wait until the public comment.
Okay. We'll go to Mark Edwards, who signed up for public comment. We'll come back to Vice Mayor Heilmann just after that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I am Mark R. Edwards. I am a renter in West Hollywood, and I love this city. A city built on creativity, courage, and community. As a community advocate and a land use practitioner for 20-plus years, I experienced how thoughtful planning can shape lives, how a zoning change could make housing more affordable, how design could welcome rather than divide, how policy could breathe life into art, small businesses, and sustainability. My work in land use, workforce development, housing, homelessness, and the arts has shown me that every decision we make about space is really about people and who we include. I realized that the best way to keep serving the city I love was to help guide its future through the Planning Commission, which I previously served on. And I have strived in my efforts to listen, learn, read in partnership with others. I came here tonight ready to work collaboratively with fellow commissioners, city staff, residents to continue the plan of a West Hollywood that is equitable, vibrant, and resilient. Lastly, I've carried the words of bell hooks in my heart: to tend the earth is always then to tend our destiny, our freedom, and our hope. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, thank you for considering my appointment, and I ask for your eye votes, so that together we can tend this city's destiny, its freedom, and hope through planning rooted in wholeheartedness. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw we have another public speaker added to the list, David Eckert. Please join us.
Hi, good evening again, David Eckert, resident of West Hollywood. I'm a little just concerned with that public comment. It just felt like a speech of, please endorse me. And I, I didn't never, I, I would have loved to be on this commission. I never saw any posting whatsoever. So it just feels a little biased and this rush to put a committee together. Your, your thought is that we need a ninth member to split a vote, but you don't know how people are going to vote. So why are we rushing to, to fill out a nine-person agenda on something that seems very biased at this point? Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilmann, back to you.
Yes, and I want to echo Mr. Eckert's comments. And Mayor, you spoke about making sure that we make an appointment, because otherwise it would be a disservice to the Planning Commission that has a number of important issues to address. But I think rushing an appointment to the Planning Commission is a disservice to the community that the Planning Commission is supposed to serve. I also feel a great deal of, of trouble, given the fact that the applicant who spoke tonight is already a declared candidate for the city council. So it seems to me that this is a very clear effort to rush through a political appointment before the community has really had noticed that there's a vacancy. As I indicated, the city clerk didn't notify the council of the vacancy. I only found out about it last week, and that, to me, is problematic. But I know the majority has spoken, and they want to move forward with this, but I am very uncomfortable with it.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson, and then I have a question for staff.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to say that we have a number of commissioners who have already practically declared their candidacies for council elections, so let's not mix, you know, bananas and apples together. So just want to say that, especially if you watched the Public Safety Commission meeting last week. Additionally, I just want to also ensure that, you know, not to speak to the character in the room, but, you know, Mark served on the Planning Commission before. He has extensive knowledge in land use and has been in the city for a number of years and only actually had to step off the Planning Commission, sorry, I don't mean to tell your business, is because he got a very esteemed job working for Mayor Bass, and sadly, with LA City, you know, first in, first out, but that type of knowledge is actually very much needed when we have zoning improvement issues, housing issues, and really critical issues before the city that, frankly, if you watch the Planning Commission meetings, they are a little bit divided with where they go. And so I fully support Mark Edwards' appointment to the Planning Commission. He served his time, and I believe he's a, a current Historic Preservation Commissioner, but his ability to step up in this needed time for our city is as much needed. I don't see this as a political appointment. I kind of take issue with that. I see it as pointing someone who frankly, based on, not to disqualify anyone else that would apply, I won't be voting for anyone else. So more people can apply, I'm supporting Mark. So that's just where it's going to go, because I believe he's the best person to fit this job at this time and can step in on day one and really get to work. So that's my, that's my opinion, and I know we're not questioning his character, because we all like Mark, and he's a great guy. So I don't want to say that out loud. But I just want to say that out loud, because I know that wasn't your intention, Vice Mayor. But I intend to support Mark Edwards tonight, and I'm happy to make that motion.
I wanted to just quickly ask the, the, my understanding was the Planning Commissioner who resigned, resigned the night of his meeting, and then staff became aware that night. I don't know what requirements there are to tell the council, but it was at that time that the notices went out, and I see that a number member, another member of a commission, Adam Bass, also appointed. That's what I have in the application. So if it was just one applicant tonight, I can understand it feeling rushed, but there are two individuals, both who have applied previously, and I believe both who have served previously on the Planning Commission, which tells me that we are doing the thing that we often have trouble doing when we post these notices and hold them open for extended amounts of times, in that we have difficulty finding applicants who are well-suited for the role. And we have waited many weeks to make decisions because we hope to see a different pool of applicants. But both of these individuals would likely be a part of any pool of applicants, likely be the, you know, especially given the experience they have serving on a commission that needs people to jump in and be ready to go on a number of really tough issues coming up, that, that these would be the candidates that would rise to the top likely. So I just, I'm, I don't, I don't feel that this is rushed. I feel like we're moving swiftly to meet the moment, and I understand that that can feel rushed, and I don't, I feel especially tender that people who have indicated that they feel left out of this process. It is very wonderful to hear more people indicate interest in serving in these roles, and that interest is always well-received, and these roles are, you know, opening up, unfortunately, quicker than we can fill them in some cases. So I, I appreciate hearing from members of the community and want to continue to find more ways to keep people involved. So I just wanted to sort of make that statement. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Mark. Mark was a former Planning Commissioner for the city. He is currently my appointee on the Historic Preservation Commission. He has experience in land use and can step into the role that he previously filled on the Planning Commission without further training. That's what we need at this time. There's a lot of work that the Planning Commission does, and Mark has the expertise to carry that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if you can answer this or not, city clerks, but how many years did Adam Bass serve on the commission, and how many years did Mr. Edwards?
Apologies, council member. I don't have that information in front of me. I'd have to research.
Okay, because we're talking about experience here, and I believe that Adam Bass was on the commission for a longer period of time than, than Mark. So if you're going to go with experience, then I would nominate Adam Bass.
Thank you.
So we have one, oh yeah, you'll have to run a vote then. We have nomination for both, Adam Bass. Yeah, that's right.
And in no way, shape, or form does this mean we do not like Adam Bass. I still love you, Adam, and I know you're watching this.
And Adam is my current appointee on the Rent Stabilization Commission.
Okay, so when I call upon you, council members, please provide a name for me. Councilmember Hing?
Mark R. Edwards.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Mark Edwards.
Councilmember Meister?
Adam Bass, but still a protest vote.
Vice Mayor Heilmann?
And Mayor Byers?
Mark Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's been nominated to fill the unscheduled vacancy to 2027.
Terrific. And with that, just to speak to the thing I had named already, the challenge we're having in filling all the commission roles, so Councilmember Hing then would have an appointment to make to Historic Preservation Commission, and then I believe we're full, we're done with the commission and advisory board appointments for this current moment of time.
That's correct. So we'll have to post the unscheduled vacancy that just occurred due to this appointment.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And congratulations. Okay, we'll move to excluded consent, which I don't believe we have any. So we'll move to our final public comment period, which, do we have any? Okay, we have one member of the public signed up for the final public comment period, which I can't quite see yet. Go ahead, I'll have you call them up. I can't see them yet. Oh, Lena Lee? Yeah, come on up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and esteemed council members, my name is Lena, and I'm speaking on behalf of CIM Group. I'm going back to item F6, which was on consent, and I couldn't make the cutoff earlier. Along with a colleague of mine who commented earlier, we are the proud owners and stewards of the lot at Fermosa. We do have, however, serious concerns about the framing of the study and the proposed ordinance, and we wanted to share some of those today. Preserving production is an important intention, but if not weighed equally with stimulating and adding flexibility for the related industries, we fear these efforts will have unintended adverse consequences. For the past five years, we've watched operators and occupiers evolving their business models, and so must we. For our facilities to remain relevant and economically viable in order to maintain and preserve the physical condition of the, of the facilities, they require more flexibility and creative uses, not less. So to highlight some of our caution on the initial staff report, when new policies initiate from a preservation lens, it often yields additional protectionist restrictions. Production and entertainment are ever-evolving. Any stricter definition of ancillary uses will absolutely be limiting as the industry adapts. The mere rumor of this study will hurt us in active discussions with decision-makers in the business community we are trying to keep local to West Hollywood. Concerned also that the study isolates our property and the facilities at the lot without more active participation prior to today. So before any additional city time and dollars are spent and this effort is underway, we're advocating for a more thorough dialogue with staff to shape the framework and methodology of the study. So we urge you to take these apprehensions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I see Kyle Brazil. Apologies if I'm not pronouncing that correctly.
Yeah, Kyle Brazil, live in West Hollywood. Was unable to attend the last city council meeting where the Fountain Avenue project was discussed. I had hoped common sense would prevail, but it did not. We saw the city council choose disingenuous performative arguments for a bike lane to be put into Fountain Avenue rather than considering actual studies. I think the city has failed to address the safety issues created by that project. For example, traffic getting directed into oncoming traffic as a result of one lane in each direction when garbage trucks are stopped, when Amazon deliveries are on the road. The city council members that voted for that proposal offered nothing about the safety issues created by the proposal. They've said nothing about the fact that more cyclists will be placed in driveways and in garageways. Like, the, the safety concerns have just been completely ignored. Mr. Erickson, I'm troubled by your phone call to me prior to the election, where you told me this was a non-issue, this wouldn't happen for years, there'd be no impact, and now you're a proponent of expediting this. I think your willingness to mislead voters prior to an election and then double, like, completely flip your position is troubling. I think it speaks a lot to your character. Ms. Byers, I think you've spoken a lot about the need to educate the public on the matter, yet there were multiple situations where you couldn't state basic facts about this. For example, you were like, I don't know that I agree, or that you don't know how many bikers commute down Fountain Avenue. Have you looked into that to discover that 1% of commuters are cyclists? Or are you still unaware? You also mentioned, Mr. Hing, you talked about your partner's collision, which I'm sorry for, but I don't think you explained how a bike lane prevents a collision for someone making a left-hand turn. You all ignore the fact that the same type of solution... You all ignore the fact that the same type of solution implemented on Venice Boulevard actually resulted in more collisions, fewer cyclists, and continued deaths. So again, I mainly speak to just say, I get it that you think this is done. We'll continue to fight. I hope common sense and compromise will prevail, but I doubt it with this group. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public sign up to speak? No? Okay. Thank you all for the meeting tonight. It's only 8:46, it's amazing. We will move into councilmember comments and meeting attendance reports. Who would like to begin? No one's... Councilmember Meister, over to you. Thank you.
Sure thing. Attendance, Quake Heroes, which was a great documentary on... and film about the Northridge earthquake and the citizens and just people who were living in those buildings who became heroes for their neighbors. And it was really amazing and very, very emotional and touching. Holloway Interim Housing Project ribbon cutting, that was very, very exciting to see. I believe when it was like 2015 or 2016, when the council at the time started talking about, you know, places that would make sense to be an interim housing project. And that was one of the locations that we had identified. And so very excited to see that happen. Halloween, well, you know, all the dogs were out, not the cats, but the dogs. And we missed the cats. But it was a fun event for everyone, for the dogs, for the guardians, and for the cats, for the... And for the children that were there. Announcements, I think that the city manager talked about this, but there is a zip in-person community meeting on October 8th at 6:00 PM at Plummer Park Community Centers, Room 5 and 6, and an online community meeting on October 16th at noon. And if you go to the city's website, you should be able to register. You can go to Engage WeHo for more information. Please also check out the calendar for all of the events happening with our Disabilities Advisory Board for Disabilities Awareness Month. And also want to wish my friends and family and anyone who was observing a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go over here to councilmember Hing.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as my meetings and attendance are concerned, I attended the Art Walk opening reception at the Leica Gallery where I saw our... My colleague, councilmember Meister, and her sister there. We were all tasting caviar, looking at art. I also attended councilmember Meister's Quake Heroes screening. I thought it was very educational. And it actually just reminded me how far this city has come in terms of being the first, I think, to offer... To promote earthquake retrofitting for many apartment buildings. So I want to thank our incredible city team for that. I attended the Holloway Interim Housing grand opening. It was a beautiful event. Thank you to all the staff who were involved in making that happen. And it's a great step forward for our city. I attended the remodel and grand opening of West Hollywood's Only McDonald's. I attended the LA County Next Chapter Writers Summit at West Hollywood Park. It was great. A lot of community members came out. Supervisor Horvath came out, which was fantastic, too. And I also attended the Voices of Recovery Symposium that they had in the ARC. And it was great to see the recovery community come out to support one another in terms of educational awareness, you know, to come together as a community to help save lives. And that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues and all their agenda items tonight. I don't... I didn't read Vice Mayor Heilman's item as a punitive item, but I know there are a couple of public comments tonight, so maybe further discussion can occur because I know when things happen at 5:00 PM, and I know Lena and all them, and we've met before. So I... Maybe there's some conversations that still need to occur, but I didn't read it as punitive. And so I just... Hopefully, there can be some correction or understanding or connections with staff on that moving forward to make sure we address that. Because that's not how I read it, and I... Knowing the Vice Mayor, I don't think that was his intention. So I just wanted to start there. I attended a number of city events. Just to highlight a few, obviously, the Next Chapter LA County Library event yesterday was wonderful. Thank you to all that attended, as well as the Holloway Open House. Thank you again to all of the staff who worked tirelessly to get the open house going. It was really a shining moment for the city and something for many years to come that I will be very proud of. I also attended the Contract Cities Board of Directors Executive Board meeting. And then additionally, in my hometown press, the Ripon Press, there was an article written about when all of the students from my high school came to West Hollywood to learn about the LGBTQ community. So if you're interested, you can go on and look. But they had a great time, and I want to again thank staff and everyone who came about, including the mayor and my colleagues who might have met them when they were here, including... And the top of it was they really loved meeting Winston. Supervisor Horvath's talk at the LA County Board of Supervisors. I'm glad that's what they took away from it. Additionally, Kyle, I recall our conversation a little differently. And when I said the project was going to happen, voila, here we are. And additionally, when it comes down to Fountain Avenue's safety, I believe since the last meeting, there have been... Danny, I'm looking at you. Seven, eight crashes, complete total wrecks on Fountain. I think my last count, give or less, maybe 10. Who knows? We can maybe provide extra numbers. Speeding, traffic enforcement. So my comments to our dear friends who continue to come and talk about the same thing, maybe go out and hold signs and tell people to slow down and to pay attention rather than coming here and understanding that traffic violence is true violence impacting our community members. We did so much outreach on Fountain Avenue, including an election, that it is getting to be a little repetitive. And additionally, if you're not doing anything to help people on Fountain Avenue slow down, maybe you should go out and pay your respects to Blake's Memorial, which was vandalized immediately following the Fountain vote. It was... A memorial for an individual that was killed on Fountain Avenue was completely vandalized. Now, I'm not saying anyone here had anything to do with that, but it's disgusting that a memorial like that would be vandalized. And knowing that corner like I do, because I walk my dog there all the time, it is shocking that that is some levels of which we would be having the conversation going on today. And so I would hope maybe people would go pay their respects there than coming to a council meeting to further cause deaths and traffic accidents to occurring in the city rather than traffic inclusionary measures and preventing more traffic deaths from occurring in the future. So understanding your frustration, but I would urge you to check your priorities and figure out what you would like to do next.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson. Vice Mayor Heilman.
Thank you. I also attended the Holloway House opening, and it was great. I want to thank staff for their engagement with that. I also participated in the homeless subcommittee. We will be coming back with some discussion of homeless priorities and services. There is a bit of a disagreement on the subcommittee on some issues. And I think we need to get greater clarity from the council and make sure staff is understanding the view of the majority on the council. I attended the 30th anniversary of the Rocky Horror Show, produced by West Hollywood's own Lou Adler. I do want to follow up on the concerns that John Larson raised about no onsite manager. I know that Andy spoke to him in the hallway, but this is just another example to me of a department that has lost its focus. Not having an onsite manager is a violation of state law. I don't understand why a tenant has to file a petition to have that issue addressed. I don't know why our rent stabilization attorney isn't sending them a letter saying that we are going to prosecute them for that violation. So I just feel that our department has consistently put the burden on tenants when there are violations, clear violations by the landlord. And I think the department has lost its original focus, which was to protect tenants from violations by landlords. Finally, on item F6, I would like us to also ask that to be reviewed by the Council Budget Subcommittee because I did not agree with staff's suggestion that this needs to be deferred. The public speakers, I appreciate them coming out, but part of the reason to initiate this was because of rumors that the lot wants to completely change what it's doing there and replace the studio uses with a completely different type of use. And there are other studios in the city where if we are really serious about protecting the entertainment industry, our entertainment industry is under attack right now. We cannot allow those facilities to be converted to non-entertainment uses. I think that would really send a message to the entertainment community that we aren't really serious about protecting the entertainment industry. So I'm certain that as this moves forward, we will dialogue with the people at the lot and with all of the other owners of studio properties. But we need to move forward with protection before all of the studio and ancillary uses get demolished in our city. And then where are we going to be with our entertainment industry? So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again to the public for your engagement in the meeting tonight. Thank you to staff for your great work. My meeting attendance report includes the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency Board meeting last month and the Clean Power Alliance Energy Committee meeting, as well as a number of wonderful community events. And the Holloway, the Holloway, the Holloway, what an amazing success. It was such a joy to be surrounded by so many in the community. Just a big thank you and kudos to the many, many staff stewards of that work over the many years it's taken. And so many of those staff are even no longer with the city. So it was just such a great moment to see some of those folks come back and to celebrate the work that has taken so long to achieve so much for the unhoused community. And we're so grateful to our partners at Essentia for their leadership now, taking that into its next chapter. But really, what a gem in our community and just a tremendous source of pride. I also wanted to thank our staff and our partners that visit West Hollywood for the amazing work on the WeHo Loves Locals program and this 2.0 rollout, the billboard, the mailers, the texts. It just felt like it's really getting out there. And we've also seen a tremendous amount of media coverage about it, people really hailing this as a meaningful sort of discount program to provide to residents. And I'm really looking forward to getting reports and data back from the usage and utility, but just seeing businesses embrace the program with big, you know, signs that they're posting themselves or added little memos in the checks. It goes a long way. And to my knowledge, the program's still open. So if you haven't got your gift card, you can still do that. There's a lot of different range of amounts available, and it downloads to your phone in many cases. So I encourage you to check that out and go enjoy the businesses with support from the city. And finally, just, I wanted to mention, I was really thrilled to see news this week about San Francisco's speed cameras being effective tools to mitigate safety concerns on specific corridors. That is one of the major concerns we have in the city when it comes to street safety. And we've limited our ability to bring those speed cameras online due to state policy. But the pilot that is currently online in cities is what is supposed to create data and a pathway for more cities to be able to bring those speed cameras online. So I was very encouraged to see that information come out of San Francisco, hopeful that our legislature will start taking that seriously and continue to hear the calls of cities like West Hollywood who want to see those cameras come into effect. The tickets are issued through Department of Transportation. It's a very different sort of program than I experienced when I was living in Arizona when, yeah, other things were happening. So I'm very hopeful about this program and want to continue our advocacy as a city to bring that because I think that will be another realm of solutions that we'll be able to engage to address many of the concerns we continue to hear plague our community. Thank you all for a great meeting tonight, a great start to October, many Awareness Month that we're making. Yeah, it's 9 o'clock, and we are adjourned. We'll see you next meeting, October 20th, back here in council chambers. Thank you all.